Test, one, two, three. Test, one, two, three. Test, test. Check, check. One, two, three. And the volume's up and it's turned on? Do you know what the device is that's in there? I don't either. As far as I know with Paul, he says it should be on all the time. Gimme, gimme a minute. Okay, Rosa, I text him.
Me and you are eating ice cream tomorrow.
Drive the five miles. You see Mad Max, right?
Good evening. It's 6:00 PM. I'm calling to order the July 12, 2022 City Council meeting. Please come to order and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Estes?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Corey?
Here.
Councilmember Rick?
Here.
Councilmember Applegate?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Present.
I have seven members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to item 4.1, Presentations. I'd like to ask the audience to please have a moment of silence for Arith Bruce. Arith was an avid rodeo rider, and I think it's appropriate since the rodeo is beginning, I believe, this weekend, tomorrow, okay, that we have a moment of silence for her and everything that she did during her life to bring that sport up to speed. Okay, thank you. And under Presentations still, we're going to go on to a Presentation by Waste Connections. Is that Chief Heber?
Yes.
No trash talk, please.
Love it. I don't even know how to follow that. So let's do something really good. Let's introduce our newest K-9, Boomer. So this is Officer Melissa Warding, no stranger for the City of Fountain. She was born and raised here with her sister Marie. Her family grew up here multiple generations. We loaned her out to the police departments before she came home last year, and she serves as one of our SRO. And when K-9 Amp retired to a standing ovation, this is our new K-9 drug dog. This dog would not be possible tonight without the support of the entire community, and that's why I want to address everybody here. We had multiple donors during Fountain Up give as much as $10, $5 to individuals, which we also have certificates, gave $1,000. And Waste Connections stepped up really, really big as a great community partner that was started with Barrett, and Adam has inherited the helm and donated $3,000 to this K-9 program. The K-9 program is a very expensive program and probably the most powerful weapon we wield on the battlefield, and can cost upwards of $10,000 of training, the dog purchase, and then all supplies that go in. Boomer and Melissa's mission will be able to continue to build a relationship with kids, because some kids don't feel comfortable with cops, but really, as we saw with Amp, Amp bridged all of those gaps between kids and the police dog and got the kids comfortable talking to police officers. So I would say the value to that with our kids in our community is invaluable. You can't put a price tag. So without further ado, we have, we will present to you. Adam, if you'll come up with Barrett? This is the most coveted award in the City of Fountain. I just made that up. It is solid gold in light, Fran. It's not really solid gold. It just looks pretty okay. I just wanted you to know that. This certificate is presented to Waste Connections on today's date. Is with great honor and thanks, we award Waste Connections a certificate of appreciation. Your generosity and wavering support of our K-9 program and our community does not go unnoticed. We are truly blessed, and I truly mean that, by your partnership, and we consider Waste Connection, and this is the most important thing, worth a cup of coffee, as part of the Fountain Police Department family. Signed, Chris A. Heber, Tifa Police for the Day.
Appreciate it.
So here's a coin for you.
Thank you.
And say you're doing a great job working the team, and Barrett, for all your support and the work you did, going through you, sir, and I appreciate all the support of Waste Connections and everything that you've done on this. And here's your certificate, sir. Would you like the floor?
Yeah.
And ma'am, you'll have the floor next.
Sure.
Put that up there. So obviously Waste Connections, our number one value is safety. We expect when you come onto our landfill, you leave the same way you came out. Being a community partner with you guys is paramount, right? So safety underlines what we do, and having that dog will help, right, helping the community. So that's what we want to do, is just be a part of the community. And if you need something from us, always don't feel free to reach out. So I'll leave it to you now.
I want to play.
Yeah, that's all he wants to do. That play and work, that's all he wants to do. We're about a week out from finishing his training, and he's done phenomenal. So, yeah. We had a talk at my ear that he's gotta behave for like 10 minutes. He was like, no. But as Chief Heber said, I'm here from Fountain, and it's good to return to my roots and come back to the school and be able to give back. I've always wanted to be a K-9 handler in law enforcement, and Boomer has given me a very opportunity to do that without having a watchdog and having to get lit. So, turn around, take a good picture. We're just happy to be able to serve the City of Fountain.
Thank you.
We already have a vest for him.
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you.
City Council, Al Linder, REA Road. You probably don't know this, maybe you do, but a few years ago, I met Barrett through Todd, and we became very good friends. And over the years, they help us up on Link and REA Road, Cane Road, Ohio, picking up the trash that comes off the trucks and so forth, anything that goes to the dump. This man took 50% off of the fee for the dump for veterans and City of Fountain residents. That's what he did. And he, I told him today that we're blessed to have him and Adam, because they're just great people.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
And as Todd knows, it's an engineered design sanitary landfill.
And plus, he's a Marine.
Thank you very much. It's everybody helping out is what makes everything possible in this city, and we have a lot of great businesses that like to step forward and help out. I don't know if it's just me, but I'm hearing a lot of feedback up here. If there's any way we can get on top of that. Moving on to item 4.2, Boards, Commissions, and Committee Members. We don't have any tonight. No appointments. We're moving on to item five, City Council Agenda Requests. City Council shall use this time to request any items for future consideration. So I'm going to start on my left here. Mr. Rick, do you have any agenda requests?
Not tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corey?
Not at this time.
All right. Sorry, Mr. Corey. Councilmember Corey. Councilmember Hinton?
Not at this time, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Estes?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Applegate?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Duncan?
I don't have anything.
Great. And I don't either. Thank you. Moving on to item six, Public to Be Heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. I do have three cards. However, two of the cards have something to do with public safety and ballot measures that are on the card. So I'm going to ask if Ms. Jamino and Mr. Carland, I'm not sure. Is that okay? If you wait until we have that discussion on the, is it to do with the ballot measure?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll wait until we get to that on the agenda then. So I have one card from Charlize Rafferty? Rafferty, okay. All righty. And you want to talk about issues facing youth in Fountain. So if you could please come down to the microphone? Okay. Okay, and if we could get that microphone turned on for her, please?
Like that?
Oh, perfect. Okay.
It was just a button. Hi, I'm Charlize Rafferty. I'm the president of Fountain Youth Council. Kayden, you want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Kayden Musgrove.
She's also a council member.
Great.
The weird timer's on, but I'll keep track of that in my head. One of the things we wanted to talk about today is, what do we want to talk about? No, I know what we're talking about. Okay, we, today, we, earlier today, we addressed with the city clerk that we would be planning on doing a presentation at your next city council meeting regarding the issues facing youth, and that's something we're really passionate about as a council. And, sorry, sister instinct. But we had a few things we wanted to say prior, so I think I'll let Kayden start. Go ahead. You can start.
Thanks. So me and Charlize, me and Charlize feel that in our community of Fountain, substance abuse is a very big problem, and that we think one of the main reasons people our age do drugs or drink too much alcohol, substance abuse of any kind, is that there's nothing for us here, that people our age always have to travel to Colorado Springs or Pueblo. If you want to go do something, like there's no pool, there's no bowling alley, there's no Skid City, there's nothing like that, and people our age are always bored during the summer. And we have an amazing school system, one of the best in the state, but it's not District 8's responsibility to keep the people that attend their schools off the streets, and we just feel that it would be nice to have something for people our age to do. Thank you.
Yeah, that was one of the things we were talking about prior to coming to this council meeting, was that we have heard, we've worked with other organizations, the CTC included, about substance abuse in teens and the youth in our cities and surrounding cities. And one of the biggest problems we've noticed is that there's nothing for youth to do, like whatsoever. We have parks and stuff, but most of the fun activities or things youth want to do during the summer requires a lot of travel, and low-income families usually can't afford that, which is, which may be reasons other people turn to different substances, and there's not a lot of mental health resources. So those are some of the things we'll be presenting on in, what was I going to say? In the next, yeah, two weeks. But yeah, that's something we're really passionate about, because I know with a lot of other youth in Fountain, they do feel like Fountain has failed us as youth, and we hear a lot from adults complaining about substance abuse in youth and teens, but we don't have the resources to fix that. So that's what we'll be talking about at the next meeting. Thank you so much.
For coming, and I want to make sure that you're aware that there are free bus passes for the youth for this summer. They're good until roughly right before Labor Day. And so if you don't have a free bus pass, please come by City Hall and press the word to people that they can come by, and that's one of the reasons that we offered the free bus passes a few years ago was so the kids can get around town and get to their friend's house, grandma's house, you know, whatever. So.
Yeah, that was definitely one of the things we talked about, but thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay, don't have any further cards from citizens that want to be heard? Is there anyone in the audience, or do we have anyone online? IT? She's trying to handle something else back there. Do we have any comments online? Okay, thank you. Okay, not seen anybody jump up, so we will move on to the next item. Item seven, the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There are no separate discussions of these items unless the council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. I would like to remove item A and B from the Consent Agenda. Does anybody disagree with that? Right.
For clarity, B was because of the date, right? The date was in.
B is because of the correcting the date, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, I want to make sure everybody in the public is aware that we're correcting the date, and then I want to just make sure that, I know I did send in some corrections for the minutes, so.
Okay.
Just, okay? All right. So having no consent agenda to pass tonight, we will move on to old business. Do we need to vote not to have any items on the consent agenda? I'm just double checking. We're good to just keep moving forward? Okay. All righty. Moving on to item A, Old Business. I'd like to address item A, Approval of the June 28, 2022 City Council Meeting Minutes. I did send some corrections into the city clerk, just some basic, page four of our minutes, just some corrections that Housing Authority got a grant, and just asking them to kind of just correct some punctuation and different things in the sentence. I just wanted to let everybody know. And then on the very last one, to please use corrections, Mayor Thompson throughout the minutes, and not my first name. So that's all the very basic corrections on that. So I would entertain a motion for the minutes, please. Thank you. Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve the minutes for the Jan, excuse me, June 28, 2022 City Council Meeting.
Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the City Council Minutes. Please vote. That's okay.
I'm having issues turning on the voting. Can we do a verbal, please?
Absolutely.
Mayor Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Hinton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Corey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carry.
Okay, thank you very much, and that takes us on to item 8B or 9B, I'm sorry. B from the Resolution 22-036, a resolution authorizing participation by the City of Fountain in the coordinated election on November 1, 2022, and providing for other matters relating thereto. The reason I asked to pull this off is, I think, just about everybody caught. Probably Joni's phone was ringing off. Okay, all right, 036. And probably, I think we had just about everybody called, poor Joni, her phone was ringing off the hook, that it's November 8, and we want to assure the public that we're getting that corrected. So the resolution that I will be signing will have November 8 everywhere in it, and not November 1. So, all right. So is there any further discussion on that?
No, but I'd like to make a motion, if we can, so.
Councilmember Corey?
Yes. So, motion to approve a resolution authorizing the participation of the City and Fountain in the coordinate election on November 8, 2022.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, and do we have a second? Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the resolution as done, to correct the date. Please, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Again, I'll do a verbal vote. Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Hinton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Corey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carry.
Okay, thank you very much. That takes care of item 9A. I'd like to move on to item 9B, Resolution 22-037, a resolution to opt out of the Colorado Family, F-A-M-L-I, program. And, okay, Connie, thank you.
Good evening. I have a presentation to go through.
Okay.
I tend to move around. I'll try and stay put. The state of Colorado, thank you. What is family? It's family medical leave insurance, and it's administered by the Colorado Department of Labor, a new division called the Family Division. It's based on a vote, so the voters voted this in, Colorado voters, in November of 2020. Just so you know, that's what it is. And it's similar to unemployment, so it's a state insurance program that ensures Colorado workers have access to paid leave during certain life circumstances. That's the best way to summarize it. So if I put it in my own words, I'm going to say it's an employer, an employee-funded insurance that we pay into, administered by the state, and it pays participating employees a portion of their salary in the event they're absent from work for qualifying events. All employers must participate, with the exception of public employers, but other employers must participate. They have to contribute premiums, and then public employers may opt out every eight years. So, any employee that earned 2,500 bucks in the previous year, they can enroll regardless of which employers or employers they worked for during that time while they were earning the wages. And employers can agree but not require their employees to exhaust employer-paid leave, such as sick leave, PTO, vacation, other things, before using family to top off their benefits.
Could you not use acronyms like PTO? So what is PTO?
Sorry, paid time off, which includes things like vacation, like sick leave, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, absolutely. So this is small print. I apologize. What does it really provide employees? It provides them 12 weeks of paid leave, and in some circumstances, like a difficult pregnancy, up to 16 weeks of paid leave. And it's really just to manage either their own serious health condition, care for a family member with a serious health condition, care for a new child, make arrangements for military deployments. All of this sounds very familiar to you if you know about the Federal Family Medical Leave Act, right? However, this is slightly different. It also includes, for the state of Colorado, leave that is paid if they need to address safety needs as a result of domestic violence situations to get out of those, sexual assault. It can be taken intermittently, not necessarily continually, that kind of thing, and it's in a rolling 12-month calendar. All of these are the details that the Colorado Department of Labor is working out as we speak. I'm keeping abreast of the current. I've met with the team, and they're trying to design how this is going to work. It is not concreted yet. And then there are some other benefits that they're trying to instill, that it would pay before someone goes to short term and that kind of thing. So what does it cost? So for employers that are really small, which is not us, we're over 10 employees, but if you're under 10 employees, for those employers, like small business owners who may be in the room, they're not going to be required to pay the premium. If you have over 10 employees, they pay their portion of the premium, and the employee pays a portion. What is the premium, you ask? Well, at the bottom, it mentions premiums. Right now, what they've determined is it's 0.9% of that employee's salary, and that's going to be through 2024. For 25 and beyond, though, they're going to determine what that'll be. The director of the Family Division gets to set the premium rate. So it's 50% employer-paid, 50% employee-paid. However, for governments, we have some choices. So we have three choices, which I'll go to on the next slide, and we can talk about that. This is about the cost. So the cost may really outweigh the benefits in here. This is about the cost. So the cost may really outweigh the benefits, and here's why. Operations can be impacted, but they're impacted anyway if people leave, and that's what we deal with, so we're used to that. This does raise employer liability concerns, because now they're paying for something. They want to ensure people are adhering to the rules and using it appropriately. There are employee relations concerns for some people who take it, or don't take it, or participate and don't participate, and employees will actually have their take-home pay reduced, because they're going to have to foot the bill for part of this premium under this new law. It's not a ton of money, but it's still, they're going to have to pay for it, like, you know, today, they don't pay for unemployment, only the employer pays for that insurance. So, one tidbit is, if we don't offer it, yeah, we could compete for talent, but it's not like a huge benefit that's going to blow it out of the water if someone offers it and we don't, because employees can actually still opt in regardless. The big impact is the budget. It's very expensive. This number here, the $83,613, was an estimate, and that's not including any promotions, raises, the jobs we haven't filled yet that are open right now, anything like that. So that's just an estimate of what it could cost us for premiums next year if we opted in. So we have choices. We have three. The first is participate, opt in, spend the money, and make every employee mandatory they pay in, and we pay in. Another option is to decline to participate with our money, our portion, and then allow employees to opt in if they see fit, and then we facilitate the payment that they want to contribute for their premiums to the state, and try and organize that and facilitate it. Right now, our payroll system, quite frankly, doesn't have that built in, and I don't know that we have the headcount to be able to facilitate that and manage it for employees that want to opt in. The third option is employees, even if we decline, can completely opt in on their own. They can contact the Colorado Department of Labor. We have posters up. Here's how you contact them. You want to opt in and pay for this insurance, you certainly can. And they will submit their wages every quarter to the Department of Labor. They have to commit to three years of opting in to be able to receive benefits and that kind of thing. So based on this, and I'm summarizing it very quickly, and I've done quite a bit of discussions with the Colorado Department of Labor, with the Family Division, is I'm suggesting that we probably opt out. That might be my recommendation for your vote, because regardless of whether we pay in or not, if employees want to opt in, they will get the same benefits. And we don't have the budget to pay for it, quite frankly. And so many of the end-to-end to facilitate this have not been, you know, the details and how it's going to work have not been worked out. They haven't even built the system yet at the state to be able to facilitate and collect the money. It's not live. They're building it. As we speak, they're behind, and so until they really get it together, know what they're doing, and we see how this works, if it's of value, I say, why pay for something that's not fully built, and we don't know if it's going to be of value yet for our people? That's my thoughts. If we want to opt out, here are the requirements. I did pre-vote notices to our employees, letting them know what this is. So I followed the pre-vote part up here. There's a lot of words on this slide, and I apologize. This is a copy, by the way, in our presentations for you. The hearing and the vote, they originally said it must occur 180 days before it goes live, so 2023 would be all the contributions. 2024 would be the program goes live for people to actually use, but because the state is so far behind in determining how this is going to work and building that platform, they said, we can vote all the way up till December if we want to, to opt out, but I'd rather us still be as close to compliance with their original thought as possible. And really, it's the governing body that makes this decision, and we will revisit this again and again, depending on how long this is in place. And then after we make a vote, then I have to do some notifications. The city will notify individual employees of their rights and what they want to do. That's it in a nutshell.
Scott, do you have anything to say?
You know, the only thing I'd add to that is, is one of the other reasons why we're recommending opt-out is because we actually have a benefit program right now for our employees that really handles most of these issues already, and so why add an additional cost if, you know, essentially, we're providing a lot of these benefits through their paid time off, et cetera? But at this point, you would like a vote, right, on whether to opt out or not?
Yes, I apologize, yes. And we do have sick time, we have short-term disability, we follow FMLA, we have vacation, we have so many other benefits in place, and I looked back over the last year, and if this would have been in place, who would have used it? Maybe one person, and that's all the only person I could find. So at this point, I would like your vote as the governing body on whether or not we're going to opt out.
So just to verify, if we don't opt out and they stay opted in, they have to pay money to this, whether they want to or not. Everybody does, correct?
Everybody, every employee.
If we opt out, only the employees that want to participate in it can enroll directly through DOL.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any questions or discussions from anyone on council? And I know I can't see names at this point, so...
I was first.
Okay.
I just have a question. If we opt out and we find out more details later on, and we think maybe it is a good program, can you opt back in?
You can opt back in.
Okay, just so that we have that on the record. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Applegate? Okay.
So...
Joni, if we can get the screen back, so I can see the names when people are ringing in. Thank you. Councilmember Rick?
So, let me make sure I understand. If we opt in, we know what is going to be required to pay for 2023, but the opt-in period is eight years, so from 2024 to 2031, the next seven years, we have no idea what we or the employees would have to pay.
Somewhat. Actually, you're probably getting somewhere, because if we go back to the cost page, if you will, please, slide, I think it's four? Slide four? So, the 0.9% fixed rate is through 2024, and for 25, for, period, for 2025 and beyond, that 50% employer-paid and 50% employee-paid, the director of the Family Division will set the premium rate according to a formula based on monetary value of the fund each year.
So...
It does cap.
We don't know what, we don't know what it's going to be. There's a formula out there, but we don't know what it's going to, the result is going to be.
Correct. It is capped. The family premium rate is statutorily capped at 1.20%. Premiums are paid only up to the Social Security cap, which is published regularly. So there's your cap.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm just not in favor of voting to tie us into something where we don't know what it's going to be.
Okay, well, let's continue the discussion before we give our opinions on it. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. So if the employee wants to opt in, do they have to opt in at the open season, when it opens up, like, or they can opt in at any time?
Good question. There is no open enrollment period. The employee can opt in when they want, but they go straight to the Department of Labor, through the Family Division, and they will, when they enroll, they commit to enrolling for three years, regardless of how many and which employers where they work, and they will contribute, because they won't be able to get the benefit if they don't contribute. They have to commit, but there's no open enrollment period for them.
But you said they had to pay into it for a certain amount of time before they could get any benefits out of it?
No, close, but no.
Okay.
They have to commit to paying into it for three years in order to play. You got to participate to play.
Right.
So, but you don't have to wait the three years to start the benefits. So 2023 is collecting premiums and only. 2024 starts the benefits eligibility, if they're eligible and they've contributed, or, you know, they're playing, and they need the benefit, they will have to apply for them, just like people apply for FMLA today. They will apply, just like for unemployment, and they will have to go through a stringent process with that division. The Department of Labor determines whether or not they qualify and get the benefit.
Thank you.
Yeah, we would determine that.
So, this is either for Scott or yourself. So we are already doing something similar to this for our employees?
Well, we have sick pay, we have vacation, we currently have personal days, we also have FMLA, and if someone is in a dire need and they need a personal leave, partially unpaid or partially paid, that's fine. We also have short-term disability in the individual themselves. We also have ADA leave. I mean, I can go on and on, but we don't have something that collectively, and we also give people time off for domestic violence or things like that, per Colorado law. So we have so many things that touch this in so many different pockets and places. It's not all-inclusive, though, transferable from employer to employer.
Okay, thank you for clarification. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further questions from anybody on the council? Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, I went through this with Pike's Peak Regional Building Association Department, and they went to every one of their employees and explained this in detail, and they, it was incredibly no. Nobody wanted to get involved in it, and mainly because the point that Councilman Rick brought up, they don't know what it's going to cost later on. It can just go anywhere on you, and the people that don't want to be in were forced to be in, and it was just, it was definitely denied there, and I see this being just not something that they want to get into. Like you said, individuals can do it whenever they want.
Okay, I'm going to see if there's any questions from the audience real quick.
Yes. Any questions from the audience?
Okay, I need you to, I need you to come on down and state your name, please.
Hi, I'm Becca Barnhart. This is not my field of specialty, so I don't really understand. When you say things like, let's say there's a case of domestic violence, and that, is that fully covered with their salary, like paid time, or is it just you get time, or like half, right? I think, if I'm understanding, this is so that people are covered in certain cases of emergencies. So I want to see, like, what already exists.
So what exists under Colorado state laws, your employer should give you some time off, even if it's unpaid, or paid if you have benefits available to you to pay, to move, to get away from someone, to go to court, things like that. This would pay a portion of your salary, I'm trying to look for the benefit page. It's a smaller portion than you would hope for, of your salary, kind of like unemployment. It's a portion of your salary. It's a pretty small chunk to help you get through and just do the essentials. That, this is similar to that. Yep, and I'm looking for the portion of your salary, but it doesn't have it exact, because it depends on how much you make. That's what's weird. It's very detailed, and they're still working through that. If you make this much, then it's this portion, this much. It would really, this benefits lower-income workers. This would benefit minimum wage workers, for sure. The more you make, the less this is going to benefit you, and even middle of the line, it just depends. Honestly, financially, I'm just telling you what I know. Is that helpful?
Yes.
Okay.
Come on down and state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Emma Khan. I'm just wondering how employees would hear about the chance to opt in, because I don't know. I'm sure there's lots of services around for me, but I might not know about them and might not choose to enroll.
So I got good news and bad news, depending on how you see this. If you're not working for a public employer, such as the City of Fountain, by the way, we have a lot of open jobs, you don't have a choice. You don't have a choice. You will automatically be enrolled, and premiums will start coming out of your paycheck January 1, 2023. If you work for a public employer that votes to opt out, then you can go as an individual to the state of Colorado. Or if you work for an employer, a public employer who votes out, that says will facilitate your payments for you, then that's an option as well. Otherwise, all Colorado employees are going to start paying in, and employers will start paying in, unless they are fewer than 10 employees.
And we've communicated this out to our employees.
Oh, yes, I apologize, yes.
And so, so they all got an email with this information, and hopefully, for those that don't check their email very often, their supervisors have been trying to disseminate this information, and HR has been available to answer questions. So hopefully, most of the employees are aware of these things as well, and aware that you're kind of making a decision here tonight, so.
Yes, we did do our pre-notifications, and I've been answering questions and welcome conversations to explain it.
Councilmember Estes?
And you had mentioned that you're also, there will be signs posted so that employees know that they can opt in if they choose.
Yes, so the Colorado Department of Labor has already started creating posters, and I have some, that we are going to put at all of our work sites, and every Colorado employer is supposed to put the posters up. They're required, and they're creating them all now. They will be posted on your work site that explains what it is, what your benefits are, and how it works. They're still creating them.
So give us your money. We're not sure when we're going to have it set up. We're not, you're required to put up a poster, but we're not sure when it's going to be ready to print and put up. Am I getting it right so far?
And there's more, but yes, yeah.
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 Okay.
I do have a poster, but it doesn't really explain much.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay. All right. Is there any further questions from council? What would council like to do with this, then? Councilmember Applegate?
I move to approve the opt-out motion to opt-out of Colorado Family Program, Resolution 22-037.
Okay, and there's a second from council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to opt out of the Colorado Family Program, making it clear that if they choose to, they can enroll on their own through DOL, right?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any further discussion from anybody on council? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
All right, thank you very much. We're going on to item C, Resolution 22-038, a resolution adopting the City of Fountain Employee Policies and Procedures Handbook. Scott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. It's my pleasure to be up here and introduce this, and I'm going to hand it back to Connie. But this is something that we typically do every couple of years. We'll bring in updates to the City of Fountain Employee Personnel Handbook, and this is probably, in the timeframe that I've been here, probably the most comprehensive change that we have to the personnel book. Not because we changed really a lot of the policies themselves, but because Connie coming in here, she really took a hard look at the overall handbook, totally restructured it, related it out to something that made way more sense to all of us, organized it in a way that was much easier for all of us to access. So I'm really excited about the changes to this handbook. I'm really excited about that. Connie's going to go through, so the changes that we had in this handbook were largely, again, organizational, making sure that we had it laid out in a way that was easy to access. We had a number of items that we had to change, some of our policies had to change based on state and federal law. We wanted to update according to, to basically comply with that. We had a number of policies that weren't in here, but we felt like needed to be in here, again, complying with law. And then we had some changes to some of our existing policies. And so Connie's going to jump in. She's going to go through those changes, really highlight the major ones, and with that, I'm going to hand it back to Connie. There you go.
I appreciate all the work you've put into this, Connie. I've been on the other side of this a few times. I know it is a lot of work and a lot of research and checking and attorneys and everything else, so thank you very much for all the time you and your staff have put into this already.
Thank you so much, Mayor Thompson. I appreciate it. Thank you so much for, I know this was a very thick packet, and I'm not going to go through every single addition and change, because you have them. I will, I will just hit the highlights. And as Scott mentioned, it really is supposed to flow kind of through the employee lifecycle, starting with prior to being employed, right, with talent acquisition and candidates, through the hiring process, all the way to when you end employment with the City of Fountain. So that's kind of the flow. I'm going to hit on some I think might be hot topics. Thank you. If you can scroll down to the bottom of the page. The last one is 6.4C wage and salary increases. I just want to mention this change. So right now, if we have a merit for the prior calendar year, if you're a new employee and you're hired, the first part of the year that we're considering the merit for, you get it. If you're hired the second part of the year, that's July 1 through the end of the year, you're not getting any, but yet you were contributing that year. So it kind of stinks for our employee experience, because we're trying to attract and retain talent, and they feel left out, and we don't, and it's just not a good thing. So I proposed in this handbook, which our employees agreed with and our executive team agreed with, why don't we prorate that, so that the first year that you're hired, whenever you're hired through that year, if we get a merit for that year's performance, you will get a portion of that based on how long you worked that year? if we get a merit for that year's performance, you will get a portion of that based on how long you worked that year and contributed. And then after your first year, you're just in the bucket like everyone else. So I wanted to point that out. Next page, please, page two, around the middle, and time off benefits. I'm going to start actually with personal days being removed. And let me tell you why. So in 2022, which is, gosh, the year we're in.
We need to catch up with you.
Sorry, I apologize.
That's okay, so which one are you on?
I'm on page two, under time off benefits.
Okay, page 42.
Yeah, see right there?
Okay.
If you go several down, I didn't number them, they're kind of in the order in the handbook. Personal days are removed, and let me tell you why. So lots of state laws have come about, several, more than I've seen in my HR career in the last few years, as more than a decade, probably 15 years, all of a sudden, boom, 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 boom. And one of them is, no use it or lose it. And it has to do with time off that's accrued, it's under the Colorado Wage Protection Rule that elevated in January of this year. Went live, right? So what that means is, if you can't use or lose time that you have accrued, that's payable, like vacation and personal days, you can't lose it anymore. Well, our employees don't tend to use their personal days, quite frankly, so they'll accrue them, and then they lose them at the end of the year. And it's a real bummer, because we really want people to take time off. So we said, instead of them losing it because they can't anymore, let's do Juneteenth instead to ensure they take that day off, that's one of the two days, right? And thank you so much, you just recently approved that. And then for that other personal day, let's do two half-days and convert them into full days, and that's Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. And there's your two personal days, we roll them back in, and that way, people don't lose them, because we can't have them lose them anymore. And then they use them, they're forced to actually take time off, be away, it's healthy to revitalize. So that's where the personal day starts, well then, that takes us to, so that city holidays got changed, thank you, that's explanation there. And then in between there, there's a few changes regarding vacation.
Connie, let me jump in, I want to add one thing that's pretty important there. And that there is going to be a hard cap. So once you hit your accrual cap, you're done, we will not accrue anymore. The only way you'll accrue is if you actually use some of that time, right? So it's just an important thing where that's a little bit of a change, because just the way the timing worked, they could actually accrue a little bit more than that, and use that within a certain amount of time. But if they didn't, they lost it. So that's the thing that we're not allowed to do anymore? That's why they have to have a hard cap, they can't go over a period.
And that's where I'm going next, is vacation.
Okay.
So Scott's talking about vacation, and that's where I'm going. It does tie into it. So with that same new wage rule is the vacation, because it's accrued. Anything, any employee accrues under vacation, that is a benefit that they can use at their own discretion, which is vacation, and it is considered wages, it is payable, has to be paid out to that employee, whether they take it, or when they leave employment, we got to pay it, right? So we want to make sure they can't lose it, and right now, we have it in a place where they lose a certain max. We can't do that anymore, so once we set an accrual, that's it, it's redlined, you cannot accrue anymore. So therefore, we raised the accrual amounts to make sure that it accommodates all of our employees that already have that vacation bucket in the hopper, because we can't take it away from them, and we need to pay it at some point, and hopefully, they take it. It will encourage people to take vacation. Okay, so there's that. We also changed the payout as far as status changes, it is 16.1C. That is on page 44. So if an employee goes from full-time and they want to go part-time, they don't want to retire, but by golly, they want to help our Parks Department, I hope they do, and go mow. If they go to part-time, now they're no longer eligible to get the vacation benefits, right? We will pay them out that balance when they do a status change, versus hold it and wait till they term, because then it's paid at a different rate, and we have to go back and figure out how that was accrued, at what rate, and when. So it's easier to clean the books, write them in there, if you're no longer eligible for this benefit, we pay it off, get off the books, and we move on. So that's a change. Okay, I'm ready to move on unless you have questions about the vacation.
What is the accrue amount? What's the max, what's the maximum, or does it depend per employee, or is it standard across the board?
It is not standard across the board, based on your tenure with the city, on how much you're allowed to accrue. So the new rates are on, hmm, 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 page 45. It is in there. So if you are hired before February 28th of 2006, so you've been with us quite some time, the max you can get is 400 hours, you can accrue that, and that's it, cuts off.
Thank you, I missed that part.
No problem, there's a table in the middle of that page, you got it? Right on, okay.
Thank you.
So you can see that.
Yep.
It is slightly different, it is higher for fire department employees that are sworn, because they work more hours per week than our knowledge-based workers that work in the office.
Makes sense, thank you.
Sure. Any more questions before I move on? Okay. I'm sorry?
He just said there's a lot in there, so, there is, yeah.
Yeah. You will see, I have included every updated federal law and state law to ensure we are doing the right thing for our folks. Okay, I want to go to page four. I want to go under Standards of Conduct Policy 72.2, Disciplinary Review Team. So I pretty much restructured our discipline philosophy to ensure, not that it's happening, but to ensure going forward and in the future, that no one individual supervisor is making a disciplinary decision on their own regarding an employee's performance or corrective actions. So this policy really brings forward a requirement that if a supervisor wants to discipline someone, or term them, or demote them, or suspend them, or whatever, they need to bring it forward to me, they will meet with Troy and me, and usually, it's going to be a department head, so that it might be the supervisor with the department head, but definitely, the department head has to be involved with the three of us, and we will pow-wow. We will discuss what's the history, what's the current issue at hand, how have we traditionally managed this situation, or performance managed it, or corrected it, what's the right thing to do legally and everything else, right? Now, if the decision, if the action that they're recommending involves a demotion, a suspension, or a termination, those three hot buttons, then we're going to pull in Scott, he is going to be part of that disciplinary review team, because that is the significant employment action that we're taking on someone. So, that's a difference. So with that team, that puts Scott in the hopper, and really, the final decision-maker for terminations, demotions, and suspensions. I just wanted to point that out. The next item underneath that is categories of correction, action, warnings. So I really restructured this. I wanted to make sure we increased our transparency to our employees as to what types of things people can do and get in trouble for, right, and the types of warnings you can get. So I clarified, you know, there's attendance, there's performance, there's behavior, and there's code of conduct. And here's what these things mean, and here are the different types of warnings. Documented verbal, written warning, final written warning, there could be suspension, there could be termination, and it depends on what it is. So I clarified all that in the handbook, and that is new, that's different, I just wanted to point that out, and I wanted to be very upfront, even including the performance and conduct issues that are not subject to progressive discipline, you're not going to get a series of warnings if you do something horrible, and that's included as well, we can go straight to termination, I made that clear. So with that, in connection is the appeal process, which is Policy 73. That has been revised, that's not new, it's just been revised, right? We took Scott out of the appeal process, because if our city, I say Scott, and I say our city manager at any time, right? I don't know that he plays the lottery, but you know, if he did. So we take him out of the appeal process, so if he is a decision-maker on a termination, then he should not be the appeal authority as well. It will go straight to a personnel board. Our hopes are, with this new process, we will have fewer of those. So if it goes straight to the personnel board, what was changed? We added days, the number of days, and increased them to 45, right, I think? To hold the hearing, just to allow the city clerk time to gather the board, get all the information, get all the parties involved, and be ready.
Who is the personnel board?
So that's set by the charter, the personnel board, and so, right now, we have three community members that are board members on that board. So it's just like any other board service, they apply for it, and we appoint them to the board, so it's sort of a rolling board.
And if they choose to appeal to the personnel board, is that a public hearing or a private hearing?
That's a good question, I'm not sure we've actually ever addressed that issue.
In the past, it's always been closed unless the party asks for it to be open.
Yeah, that's probably, that's exactly how we would do it, yeah.
I mean, that would be my concern more, it would be closed, because you don't want your personnel issues, you know, okay.
Correct, right.
Good question, excellent. The last thing I wanted to call attention to, and then I certainly open it up for questions, is under separation of employment, Policy 75.7, city property. I really wanted to put this relatively standard policy in place, and it's so simple, but we really need to say that you're expected to return city property that was issued to you once you leave employment. Pretty standard, right? We also reserve the right to ask for it back, and depending on the item, and depending on how we do it, and signatures and forms, to charge a portion of the depreciated amount if you don't return something valuable, right? Also, with that, I added city wear, and it's really important that when someone leaves city employment, they return any city wear, any labeled branded wear, I'm trying to see someone wearing, Todd would have to return that shirt, right? Because we don't want someone walking around the community wearing something that looks like they're an employee, and then a citizen invites them to their home, it's just a security, standard HR practice that goes in handbooks that I noticed we didn't have. So I put that in there, I just wanted you to know that. Any questions?
Go ahead, Councilmember Estes.
How is that with city council and the attire we have?
I'm just going to ask that, when you're done serving, you return it.
Okay, because that hasn't been the policy in the past, so that's really good.
Can I want to mention one thing, though? The one thing to remember is this handbook, this personnel policy is for the employees, and it really doesn't apply to the council members, anyway. That would be a good practice, but...
It depends on what it is, too. But, yeah. If it was a gift, and you have a bag that you carry, it's probably nothing. If it's a uniform that someone would wear that would represent someone in the community, once that person's done in that role, they return that, that's kind of where that's going.
Okay, I have a question, because some organizations also require that you do not take city wear, as you say, to Goodwells, or to, you know, someone, to donate them. So is that in here, that they shouldn't be donated also?
Yes, actually.
Okay.
Yes. And I don't know that it's in the termination section, it might just be under city wear in general, but yes. That's a conversation I had with the employees, the EAG group, when we were going through the handbook line by line, the employee advisory group reviewed this, and same thing with the executive committee. I did say, you're not supposed to donate to charity, Goodwill, the ARC, or anything, these uniforms are branded wear, yes, it's a security risk.
So just, even if that person doesn't, suppose they are not terminated, they pass away, does the family know, would the family be aware not to donate any city wear?
Boy, that's a darn good question. I don't know that they would be aware of that. And I think that's something that HR would probably address very gingerly and very gently in the event of a death of an employee with the family of, as we collect all of the equipment or different city-issued materials that the employee was given, please go ahead and collect everything from home, including any city wear that you find, we need to turn those back in.
Back to the appeal. If someone did go to the Citizen Appeal Board, Personnel Board, and they disagreed with the decision that you or Scott had made, what, that's very awkward, I've had an employee, I've had someone that worked for me one time, that came back, and it's very uncomfortable.
Yeah, I can address that, Mayor. So the way that the board works is, if the board, the board has a decision whether or not to agree with the city's decision regarding discipline. If they agree with the city's decision regarding the discipline, then that's sort of the end of it, the decision stands. If they disagree, that board is an advisory board to the city council. And so that's really the one exception that exists for the council getting involved in personnel matters. And so what would happen is, they would write up those findings, and they would submit those to the council, the findings that disagreed with the city's action. And then it would be the responsibility of the council to make, take action based upon those findings. So it's really just similar to other advisory boards, they would advise you about what their findings were in that hearing, and the seven of you would have a decision to make.
And then is that done in open session or executive session?
Again, that would probably be a situation where the employee would get to elect a public session if they chose to, but it would be their choice.
Okay, thank you.
Usually it'd be executive.
Right.
It would be executive, but as Councilmember Applegate just said, we can't vote on anything in executive session and make decisions.
No. I'm just going to reference back to the one time this has happened in the past. The council at that point heard it in executive session, they asked the questions they needed to ask, and then they came out and took action on it.
Back in open session to make the decision public. Okay, that makes sense, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can I mention one thing on this appeal process, by the way? I think it's really an important change, moving the city manager out of the appeal authority. And the reason why is because when you're dealing with personnel issues that literally can impact someone's life, like termination, you know, what happens is, a department may be working through a bunch of issues with that employee, but the city manager isn't allowed to really know, right, what's going on, because he's the appeal authority, kind of like a judge would be. And so what often happens, or what, not often, it's not like this happens a lot, but what could happen is that the department then makes a decision, it then gets appealed to the city manager, and the city manager may review that and go, wait a minute, that's not okay, I don't agree with that decision, or the same issue was handled this way in Department X, and another way in Department Y, which isn't good, right, because we have to treat those issues consistently. And so it really takes the city manager out of that, the current situation, takes the city manager out of that decision-making role until it's almost too late. It's not too late, but what then happens is, now this person has been terminated theoretically, everyone knows this person's been terminated, their reputation may be sort of tarnished, and then the city manager comes back in and reviews it, and has to make a decision to allow this person to come back or not. Well, at that point, you know, the cow's out of the barn, so to speak. And so, under this new policy, this new process, it allows the city manager to be a part, in fact, requires the city manager to be a part of that process anytime we're going to hit, you know, a termination, suspension, or demotion. Which allows us to have this conversation with departments to ensure you're consistent, to ensure that, you know, the employee's being treated fairly, and frankly, to also protect us from a liability standpoint, so that we're not being inconsistent in different areas. And so I think it's really important, yet it still allows, it actually gets the city manager involved more often, right? But it also allows that process, the appeal process, to still continue, if ultimately, they don't like that decision. But it's always really awkward when a department's made a decision to do something, and then the city manager has to come in and go, man, I think you kind of screwed that up, you know, and here's why. Again, it's not like it happens a lot, but it certainly creates an awkward situation when it has, so, just want to mention that. The other thing I want to mention, this is just, I didn't hit this enough to begin with, but I just can't tell you how much I really appreciate Connie and what she's done here. I mean, she really is our, I mean, she's a past president of SHRM in Colorado Springs. I mean, she just brings a whole level of professionalism, so her diving in, the way she's restructured things, you know, and making sure that all of our policies are updated, you know, I mean, she just knows the stuff, and it's just, it's a... So it's just, to me, it's a heck of a great comfort knowing that we have, you know, someone like this who's really going through with a fine-tooth comb, and keeping up on the new stuff, like family. You know, that's so new that they haven't even figured it out yet. But it is really nice to have someone like Connie to do this, I just wanted to kind of express that and express my appreciation as well.
Thank you very much. And I will reiterate one more time, the disciplinary review team will require supervisors, not only to bring their department heads into the mix, but the department... the department heads will meet with the city attorney and the HR director before they move forward on issuing any corrective action notices. Any written warnings or anything, we will review and talk it through, because it could be a different situation. It could be a coaching opportunity. There may be a law protecting the employee from something. Really talk through those situations, so there's no knee-jerk reactions that will cause a termination down the road that we could have prevented and fixed and worked through. So I hope this really improves it. Any other questions?
Councilmember Rick?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I need to disclose that today, I met with the HR manager, the city attorney, and the Administrative Services Manager regarding questions and concerns that I had regarding this handbook. There were three items that I brought to their attention, I'll say that were resolved, but I do need to inform council of what and why that happened. And then there were two other items that I have concerns on that we need to address as a council. If this is the appropriate time to do that, I would like to do that. If not, if you have more questions or other things we need to go through, I can wait.
Let me just make sure Connie's completely through with her presentation, and then we'll go back to that, if that's okay with you?
Sure.
Okay.
I can highlight anything you want me to highlight. I just wanted to make sure I highlighted those. I mean, that list is long, so I'm fine. I'm open for whatever you want to cover in questions. Thank you.
Yeah, because if there was something that was amended in the document with your, or suggested amendments for your, in your conversations today, yeah, let's get it on public record. So. I wasn't sure if Connie was gonna say it or...
There is one sentence. Do you know what page that's on? Thank you. Here it is. Can you go to page 28, please? 7.6E.
Okay, everybody, just a second to, I see people madly swiping, so hang on just a second. Let people get there.
There you go. There is, under the, where it says, "No compensation shall be paid in lieu of missing a break." So this policy says operational requirements and unassigned breaks. So occasionally, I hope people don't miss breaks, but operational requirements may say, "We need to move around your schedule," where meal times and breaks will not be assigned, but we've got to move them and postpone them and finish a particular project. This does say, "No compensation shall be paid in lieu of missing a break." That's the assumption that the employee chose not to take the break by missing in a break. And then it says, "However, employees must be paid for time worked if they work through their mealtime." I'm going to make a change to that sentence based on our meeting, just to ensure that compensation shall be paid in lieu of missing a break if the employee was denied their break time. If a supervisor denies an employee's break time, first of all, hopefully that's not happening. I haven't heard of it happening. It would definitely be brought to my attention, and it's not right. So if a supervisor denies that an employee can take a break, then yes, we will compensate time. If the employee works through their breaks and misses breaks, which unfortunately happens, it happens probably often in your world, too, then, you know, that's not, we're not gonna pay them extra if they miss that break, because that's just paid anyway. It's paid time. Does that make sense?
And that's state law, correct?
Correct. Correct. State law is breaks are paid, meal times are not. However, if we deny them a break time, that's different. And I would hope we would not be breaking that law to begin with, but if we do, in some oddball situation, I'm gonna change that sentence to say, "Compensation shall be paid in lieu of missing a break if the employee was denied break time."
Yeah, that's what our practice is already, but you just want to specify it in there.
We will, absolutely. Hopefully, we're not doing that ever.
Okay. Was that one of your concerns?
That was one.
Okay. All right, go ahead. And if you could say the page number, yeah.
Page 27, item 7.3C, the third bullet.
Okay, hang on just a second. Let everybody get there.
Sure.
7.3C, call-out provisions?
Right.
A third bullet point.
Right. Employees working on call-out time for four hours or more may be provided meals at the city's expense. So let's use an example. Troy is on call, for whatever reason. He gets called in, and he has to work more than four hours. The policy here says the employee will be provided a meal. However, in the policy, there is nothing that says what the limit on that meal is. So if Troy says, "I want prime rib, I want filet mignon, I want lobster, I want whatever."
I'll take care of that.
Yeah.
There is a policy, correct?
Correct. Two thoughts.
So...
I'm gonna jump, go ahead.
Mr. Trilch, Mr. Trilch has agreed that they're gonna change the finance policy, rather than the wording here, that limits the amount that they can get to whatever the GSA per diem is that's set by the government, so that we're not overpaying for these kinds of meals.
Let me just make a cautionary comment about that. Here's a cautionary comment. The reality is this. The reality is, when these happen, it's usually pizza and sub sandwiches, right? And so what my worry would be is if now you include the GSA number, there may be an expectation like, oh, wow, now, now, you know, the city's gonna now pay more for those lunches, which we typically don't. Like, well, you know, you'll have a water crew out on a water break for hours. We'll take them pizzas or sub sandwiches, that kind of thing. I just, it's just a cautionary note for whatever that's worth.
And you're right. That's why Mr. Trilch is putting it in the finance policy, rather than the employee handbook.
I think his concern is, it's the GSA standard. Go ahead, Connie.
I will note that I think you misstated something. You said, "will provide a meal." That is not accurate.
May, you're correct, may.
May. And I should put "may" in italics. May provide a meal. No one's guaranteed a meal. It's not definite. It's not an absolute benefit. It may happen. And the few times it has happened, I'm gonna look at our utilities director. It's probably most likely some type of emergency where our crews are out on the field, and the supervisor, or the foreman, or Deanna, or whomever, brings them out some sandwiches. That's it. Because they're stuck, and they can't go anywhere, and they can't get food. But those are the few and far between times. But it's definitely not a guaranteed, it's not will, it's a may.
And to clarify, that, we did talk about today, that we would look at it in the financial policies, which we're also looking to review, and the suggestion was, you know, if we had to establish some type of limit, that the GSA per diem rate would be, you know, it's a well-known, well-established limit, and that we could consider that. So that's not a final decision yet.
Okay, but in the meantime, it does say "may."
May.
May. Okay. All right, and other, anything else?
Page 34, item 8 dot 9A.
Hang on just a second. 8.9A, inclement weather pay?
Letting the screen catch up. Employees who are excused from work by the city manager under inclement weather position, conditions shall receive their regular rate of pay. Employees excused early will be determined based on their position, rather than where the employee resides and needs to go from the workshop, worksite. The question I asked is, is this pay, does these hours that we're granting the employees for not working, does that count towards overtime? What was explained, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is we have a very outdated pay management system that does not, is not able to discern between vacation, holiday, et cetera. It combines all those hours into one and uses overtime, uses that total calculation to determine what's overtime.
So I think, excuse me, so I think that, we have a newer management program. The old one would have handled it as well. The biggest issue here, and I can't tell you when that was actually implemented, 20-plus years ago, I just couldn't tell you, but, you know, there's not really an issue of breaking it out. Is that what you're asking?
What I'm asking is...
I mean, we can manage inclement weather pay.
But does that preclude, okay, we'll use the example we used. We've got a mechanic down in Fleet Services.
Yeah.
We have to shut down for two or three days. He comes back in, he's still gotta get those vehicles out that were broken down. He's lost three days. He's gotta get them back out. We need them up. He's gotta work on them. So he's gotta work two extra hours on Thursday and Friday. Technically, he's only worked 20 hours, but because we paid him for the three days of inclement pay, now he's gonna get four hours of overtime.
Well, that's never happened, so that's, that's interesting. In fact, usually inclement weather pay is like a few hours. Never, I mean, but I suppose it could happen. I guess there was a huge...
Yeah, a huge storm in the night, was it the late night?
Yeah.
I think even a couple of years ago, it was shut down for one day.
Yeah, that I hear people talking about for several days. So, I mean, I guess theoretically it could happen. However, I will say this, our, one thing that you need to know about your supervisors and department heads is they're really good at managing time. And so, you know what's gonna happen, that they're just gonna be behind. They're not gonna, they're not going to, unless there's an emergency, let's say it's a fire truck, right? They're not really gonna, they're gonna manage that overtime. There, it's just never been an issue with these sorts of, these sorts of situations, mainly because our supervisors really manage that overtime. But I guess theoretically, yeah, it could happen.
Okay.
Was there anything else?
Page 82. Next to the last sentence in the paragraph, "City manager has the discretion to approve or deny an employee's request to concealed carry while at work or while doing city business." Don't have a problem with the majority of it, but what happens when the city employee has to do business in a residence house? You know, water meter needs to be replaced. Guy with a concealed permit shows up and wants to go in a residence house. We don't have anything here that specifies, hey, you need to lock it and leave it at a truck, or you need to ask the resident, is it okay? I mean, I've had contractors come to my house and say, hey, I'm carrying right now. Is it okay if I come in my house, in your house? Or, do you want me to leave it in the truck? How do you want to handle that? There's nothing in this policy that says how we want to handle that.
I think that's a great comment. I mean, this is a policy the council adopted 10-plus years ago. I can't remember. It was a number of years ago, the city council decided they wanted to adopt this kind of policy. They actually brought it up in the city council meeting. I think that's a great issue, point, and in fact, I would say that that isn't addressed in here, nor is even the ability to store it in their vehicle, because there's another policy that specifically says, you can't store your guns in your vehicles, right, or in your place of work. So one of the things we've talked about internally, in the not-too-far-distant past, in the recent, recent past, was that this really needs updating on a couple of things, including things like training for employees who are gonna take advantage of this, right? Who want to do this. We don't have anything like that. This policy never included anything like that. I feel like there were conversations back then about that. Like I said, it's been a number of years. I think the council at the time decided, you know, you know, we'll accept whatever the concealed carry requirements are and call it good. I just think from a safety of employee standpoint, and our public, it makes sense to do training like that. And that, that modification by itself, I know I'm talking beyond even that, but I think that's, that's a real legitimate change, because I don't know that we want employees carrying weapons into people's homes.
Or storing them in the vehicles or in the workplace.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, I think that's a legitimate concern.
I open it up to question to the rest of the council as to where we want to go with this. I, like I said, I've had people come into my house that have been carrying. They asked me, and I was okay with it, but if somebody did come in my house and was carrying and didn't tell me, I think I might be a little more upset about it.
How would you know? I really need to have the ability to know who came in first. I have no idea to know.
Councilmember Duncan's next.
Okay. So my question to this also is, and I know we can go back to the policy that we talked about doing personnel actions. So is an employee allowed, if they were having a concealed handgun, and you wanted to meet them about a personnel issue, could they bring that handgun to the meeting?
Honestly, I wouldn't know if they had it concealed, if they showed up with it on them. They're allowed to have it in City Hall if they've been approved by Scott to have a concealed handgun.
Yeah, now, that's one of the things we review. If there's a personnel issue with an employee who we have approved, one of the things HR does is review that. They look at their list, and oh, my gosh, they see that, you know, that Troy Johnson, he's the one we're having this issue with. Sorry, we're just picking all kinds of things. After he ate his lobster, you know, steak and lobster, we're, you know, we're bringing him in for a conversation, and he's, and he's carrying, we're gonna know that, and we're probably gonna ask him to come in without it.
Yes.
But, okay, so you asked, but does it say, I mean, shouldn't we say something in here that if, they should not bring it to an employee meeting? I mean, should it be specific, or, I mean, you say, "Don't bring it," but do I have a choice? It says, "I can bring one," and you say, "Don't bring it," but...
Well, the city manager giveth, and the city manager taketh away. So if the city says, I mean, really, it's a case where they don't have a legal right to carry at all here, unless the city, their employer allows them. So if the city says, hey, we're dealing with your employment issue, don't bring your gun. Now, granted, I mean, who knows if they're gonna try to sneak something in anyway? And frankly, you know, we fortunately don't have a lot of those instances, but there have been a few times where we've been a little concerned about an employee and a specific conversation we're gonna have, and we actually will have police officers there because of that issue. But we would tell them not to.
I would think that if an employee goes on corrective action, we're having issues. Scott's probably gonna revoke their concealed carry before we get to a significant confrontation. I, I'm hoping that HR would make Scott aware, this employee's on the concealed carry list. We're meeting as a disciplinary review team to talk about a corrective action that's very concerning. Perhaps you might want to think about revoking that privilege.
Connie, how many, would you, in my head, I'm thinking we might have 15 employees who have concealed carry.
Not even close.
Oh, not even that?
Six, maybe?
Oh, I thought we had more.
We looked at it today, five?
Oh, five.
Because someone left, a couple of people retired. Yeah, we only have five right now.
Yeah, there's currently five. And I'd just add on to this as well. I mean, it is a vetted process that goes just beyond the letter of the policy, and Scott really does investigate and look into the privilege, and it's coordinated with Chief Heber. And in some cases, he's disapproved. So, so there's a process in place, and as Scott has mentioned, you know, there's some additional training and some procedures that we can put in place that are still, at the end of the day, land on the city manager's desk for a decision, so.
And before it goes to Scott, if, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, it's just not an automatic...
Before it even goes to Scott, the department manager has to approve it and support it. So if the department manager says, you know what, I don't want the water meter folks being able to conceal carry, because they're gonna go in our citizens' homes. The department manager can say, no, this isn't going to Scott. I don't, I don't approve this, because there's a process, right?
I do think, though...
Just trying to say, you know, the what-ifs. I mean, we can always keep saying, what-if, what-if, what-if. Because we know most people that, you know, they have clean records or whatever. It's not so much that they're disgruntled or whatever, but I just want to be protective of our staff, right?
Yeah, I agree. And the public, yeah. I think that's a good point. I do think that sounds like this would be one of those policies we'd probably want to really dig into and update. We just haven't touched in years.
Well, I also think that you can have, and when they get their permit from you, the permit potentially can say, or their policy, whatever, can say, if you have a concealed carry permit, and you have to, you have an instance where you have to go to someone's home, right, then you are responsible for making sure that you secure that vehicle, either in your own personal vehicle, or taking it home on your own time before you hit that.
I think that's an excellent verbiage that you've suggested, Mayor Thompson. And our policy, when we have the approval form, has all kinds of, and this, and this, and this, and this, and don't do, right? And we can definitely make sure we update that, because I don't know when it was updated either. I don't.
I don't think it's ever been updated since we initially adopted it.
Adopted in 2013. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Hinton? Oh, Councilmember Estes, okay.
I just want to say that I have some faith in the system, that on this, I trust Scott, that he's not... that he's not going to let willy-nilly people come in with a gun. You know, I think that there is a process in there. You know, there's a lot of verbiage already in here, and we're obviously hearing there's some policies. They probably need updated. But I have faith that you're doing the right thing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, it's more short of a, a comment, and I agree with Dietrich on this, um, that really just protection of staff. Um, you just, you just don't know. Um, I didn't, I haven't heard much from Chief, and I just kind of want to hear like your thoughts about that and, um, your concerns. And I, and I'm all about concealed carry, you know. I believe in the second.
You know, obviously, privately, I'm a big supporter. Uh, we have the most concealed carry permits in, you know, in the state, in Pasco County. Certainly, a lot of them exist here in Fountain. We deal with them all the time in the street. We deal with them with open carry and concealed carry in the parks and throughout our, uh, city. And we respect that and we welcome that. Uh, certainly when it comes to employees, we do have a risk assessment team. You know, I would just say from prior experience, and I will spare the details, but we do have a risk assessment team, as John alluded to, uh, where anytime we have an employee, um, in crisis, the right buttons are pushed, the right conversations are having, appropriate actions are taken to protect city staff, the employee, and all the first responders involved. And I've always been confident in those conversations.
I appreciate that, Chief. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that I'm feeling like everybody's comfortable with what is written here in the handbook. However, we would like to see some review of the policy and maybe some additions added to it with Chief and everybody working together to Scott's process and policies on, um, places they're allowed to take them, not allowed to take them. Um, because it is a responsibility. I think those of us who do have concealed carry permits, we're very aware of where we're allowed to take them and, and not take them. And, and try to plan ahead in our day, but it isn't always possible.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that I capture what you just shared with me, that we will update our policy, our approval process behind the scenes that has more detail in it than the employee handbook, correct? I, I got that right?
Are you comfortable with that?
Is that good? Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, thank you so much.
All right. And did you, and have any other questions?
No, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm going to see if there's anyone in the public that has any questions or comments. I wasn't sure if you were just walking around because you got tired of sitting there for a while.
No.
Okay.
You know.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Alender Arié wrote, um, I'm going to say something and I don't mean to be disrespectful, okay? Um, tonight there was a very, a F decision on fire department ballot questions. That's what I came for tonight. I, I, I can't believe this right here. I'm sorry, Scott. This was the most boring thing I've ever heard. And, you know, for you to keep us here, the, the little few of the public that comes to hear something that's really important about police and fire, I got to sit here and go through this. I got to go. This is important to me. That's why I came tonight. I just want to make it, because I'm going to have to go. But the fire and police thing was very important. This isn't. This is, to me, tonight was a meeting for your employees. And that's where this should have been taken place, as far as I'm concerned. You've got a pregnant lady sitting back there waiting for the police and fire thing, and we got to go through this. I'm sorry, I got to speak up.
Any other comments from anyone in the audience? Okay. Do you have any last minute wrap-up, um, questions or Scott? Anybody? Okay. So we've had a lot of discussion on the adoption of the employee handbook and policies. Is there any further discussion or questions from anybody on council before we?
Sorry, Chief, I can't.
Okay. If not, what would council like to do? Councilmember Applegate?
Move to approve Resolution twenty-two dash zero three eight with the changes that will be taking place.
Okay. Councilmember Hinton?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to, um, on the passing of the employee handbook. Um, unless there's any further discussion from anybody in council, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay. You know, I was going to plan on taking a break after, um, but I think we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break now, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay, so it's seven twenty-eight. Let's just go ahead and take a break until seven thirty-five, please. I'm calling the meeting back to order. If everyone could please have a seat, please. We're calling the meeting back to order. All right, we're on to item nine D, Resolution twenty-two dash zero three nine, a resolution to authorize the increase of the 2022 pavement resurfacing budget by a hundred and six thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars to facilitate the repaving of Southmore Drive. You're not Bob McDonnell.
No, I'm not. But I will be standing in for Bob tonight, Mayor.
Okay.
Counsel, good evening. Um, this is one that, that we do every year. Um, we bring our road resurfacing, uh, projects to you in February. And keep in mind, this is the monies we were talking about that come specifically out of the moving Fountain Forward restricted, uh, line item, that the monies go in and they can only be spent on resurfacing projects. So every year, we try to be conservative. We try to be safe with our projects until we know what the revenues have been for that line item. Well, finance has confirmed for us this year that we do have in that moving Fountain Forward line item enough so that we can, uh, take care of our Southmore resurfacing for this year. So when we say an increase, it's an increase in the number of projects because we do have the funding. Um, so let's get that funding out and put it to work and, and resurface Southmore. And that's what the request is tonight.
To make it clear, as much as we all wish this was fixing that portion that is broken, this is not.
This is not.
This is just for resurfacing from Southmore Drive, from Carson Boulevard North to the American Legion Post.
Correct. We would need about five million more to, to try to take care of that one.
So make sure it's clear, though, to everybody.
Absolutely.
If we could have done it for this amount of money, we would have done it already.
Yes. And if you do drive that portion of Southmore, you will see down in that area for the last five, six years, this is done in combination with our CDBG funding, which goes to sidewalk curb and gutter improvements in that area. So Bob has been focusing on that area of Southmore the last two years with CDBG. This resurfacing will come through. That's the last thing you do. Um, so that whole area will see a nice improvement.
Okay. And CDBG goes, not curbs and gutters, but also any ADA ramps we might have needed in that area.
Correct.
Right?
Sure does.
All right. Any further questions or from anybody on council regarding this? Any questions from anybody in the audience? Seeing none, what would council like to do? Councilmember Duncan?
I recommend approval of Resolition, Resolution twenty-two dash zero three nine, increasing the twenty-two pavement resurfacing budget by that amount in order to complete pavement on Southmore Drive.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Thank you all.
All right, that takes us on to item nine E, an amendment to the utility fee schedule for construction water. Taylor Murphy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the public.
I don't think you're on. Okay.
Good evening. I am Taylor Murphy, the city's water resource manager. Uh, tonight, I will be presenting a proposed amendment to the utility fee schedule for an increase of the fee that we charge for construction water. Next slide, please. So at a very high level, what construction water is, this is water that we sell out of our system via temporary meters affixed to fire hydrants. These can be moved with projects or used in various locations that are remote. Uh, generally, these are used by contractors, the most part, for the purposes of dust control to aid in compaction of dirt. We do sometimes see them in other uses. People fill trucks for flushing out sewer lines or other miscellaneous purposes. Sometimes we see them on new construction before a permanent meter is set. I do want to stress that this, uh, use of water comprises a very small percentage of our total, total water sales. In the past five years, it's varied from between point two percent to two percent of our total sales for the year. Generally, that average is less than one percent of all water sold by the City of Fountain, and it comprises a very small part of our revenue. Next slide, please. So really, the, uh, the driver of why we are taking this to you now is that the water utility has a focus on trying to maximize our water rights. Uh, we are working on solutions that will allow us to use our water rights to solve some of the current problems we face. So we need to smartly use the rights we have so that we can more efficiently use the future rights we will also need. And so, one, uh, very quick concept to run by you is that the city owns water, even after it's been used by customers. If it makes it back to the creek, we generally own that portion that makes it back to the creek. So when water goes through a meter inside your home or your business, some of that water goes through the plumbing, goes to the sewage treatment plant, gets treated, goes back to the creek, we still own that portion of the water that makes it back to the creek. So if you put it on your landscaping, your irrigation outside, some of it evaporates, some of it is used by that grass and turf, some of it seeps into the ground, joins the groundwater, and slowly flows back to the creek. We, again, own that. This whole cycle of taking water out of the creek or at another location, using it through the water system, and then recapturing it back at the creek, generally yields about fifty percent of the original water put in. This is how we most efficiently use water and stretch what we have in our water rights portfolio. When we use water for construction water, generally that water is only used to spray on outdoor surfaces, mostly dirt, aggregate, and base for construction purposes, the primary use. When it is put to that type of application, we only recover about twenty percent of that water that accretes back to the creek after that whole process is done. So this is really just to emphasize that construction water is the least efficient use of the city's water rights as they are applied. Next slide, please. So the big question really is, why are we proposing to change the fee? The current fee that we have in place is a flat seven dollars per thousand gallons used, regardless of if you use ten thousand or a million gallons. That is a flat fee. Unlike our normal water rates, those scale based on use. Uh, they start at about six dollars on the low end for residential, and then on the high end, they top out around thirteen dollars fifty-two cents. That's for a large commercial user using a lot of water. Right now, they pay a lot more than a contractor who's effectively spraying that water on the dirt. So we feel that the, the fee we charge right now for construction water does not accurately reflect the type of use that water is being put to. And it also does not reflect how inefficient that use of water is compared to the other uses that we sell it for. And then, one final note is that although this is not a water rate, we have done two water rate case studies and increases in the past five years. This fee has not been incorporated with those, so this fee has remained low while the rest of our water rates have increased to cover the cost of doing business. We feel it's time that this catches up. Next slide, please. So just a quick overview of the proposed changes. We're making some small language tweaks to bring all of the language into conformity with the construction water. That is the name of the program. We had some, uh, misclarifications on the previous language. But what we are proposing is to raise that from seven dollars per thousand gallons to from $7 per 1,000 gallons to $13.52. That dollar value is consistent with the highest tiered rate for commercial users. Generally, a commercial user who is up in that tiered rate is applying most of the water outdoors onto large irrigation landscaping, or they're using it for industrial processes, which is collecting a lot of that water back through the sewer. I do want to note that this proposed change would take effect August 11th. There are two purposes for this. One is that this coincides with the start of the August billing. We do not want to shift that that cost midway through a billing cycle and have to do manual billing and potentially cause errors in our billing for that month. The more important aspect is that we want to communicate this change to all of our active customers, the various contractors and other users that rely on this program. We want to let them know beforehand that their bill will be going up and why that is. Next slide, please. And so this is just a quick sample of how billing would change. We used a generic 250,000 gallon a month account. That is a lot of water in a month. So before, with the $7 fee, that would have been about $2,100. Now, it'll be 3,700. It's about a 75% increase. And then we've compared it to a similar three-quarter inch residential house if they used that much water. And I should note, that's about 20 to 25 times the amount of water that a pretty large house uses it in summer, just to show how much water that is. And then we also compared it to a commercial account to show that this is a bit more, but that commercial account at 250,000 gallons is not yet in the highest tier. Next slide, please. And so finally, I just want to make one last note, that utility staff will be coming back to you later this year with a comprehensive overhaul and consolidation of the utilities' codes, the regulations for the various utilities departments, and the utility fee schedules. There is a working employee group that is working on those. But at this point in time, we felt it was important to make this one small change to the fee schedule because there's still time in the summer for this to have an impact and help us conserve the water rights that we are selling during the peak season of the year when we most pay attention to this program. And with that, I'd like to open it to any questions you have.
Okay, are there any questions from anyone in council?
Corey.
Yep.
Okay. Council member Corey?
So where do our fees line up in a sense of like, compared to Colorado Springs? Are we start our rates, even with this increase, are our rates still underneath theirs, or?
I'm glad you asked that.
More or less?
So I went through and looked at some of the regional water providers. So it's really quite high variance. Widefield, for instance, sells their water in bulk at $5.20 per gallon, which is the lowest by far that I've found. Colorado Springs has a flat fee of $10.30. Some of the northern districts north of Colorado Springs, Woodmore sells theirs at $18 per 1,000. And Monument, believe it or not, sells it at $34 per 1,000 gallons to most users.
[laughter]
So across the whole spectrum, we fall somewhere in the middle. We're a bit high for the southern end users, but our water is mostly surface water, unlike our neighbors that can use groundwater to a much greater effect than we can.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I had thought, sorry, did he answer your question?
Yes.
He asked the question I was going to ask.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I hadn't missed something here. So okay, are there any other questions from any other council members? Any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none, what would council like to do with this? Council member Hinton?
Yes, I move to approve Resolution 22-040, a resolution amending the schedule of fees application to utility services.
Council member Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on this item to increase the construction water fees per 1,000 gallons. Is there any further discussion from anyone? If not, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, our next item is item nine F, Discussion and Decision on Ballot Major Items for the November 2022 ballot. And we are going to start off with Mr. Trainor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Actually, before I get started, let me just briefly, I want to address Mr. Linder's comments, because I think that was a really valid comment. And I just really want to apologize to those folks, Penny, yourself, Fran, Lloyd, anyone who's here for the ballot major discussion. I think that was a really good comment. Apologize, it's put on the end of the agenda. It just wasn't, didn't really think about it when we put this agenda together. So I just wanted to make sure I apologize to those who had been waiting for that, you know, almost two hours now. So with that, let me get into this. I wanted to make sure I kind of laid out a little bit of the background. Earlier this year, the city council started having some discussions. Actually, some of those discussions began in previous years, but started having discussions in earnest around the potential for moving forward on a ballot major, either for PPR, joining the PPRTA, or and/or a public safety ballot major, knowing that there are needs in both of those areas that really, that we hear of anecdotally, and that we can see with our own eyes. And so those conversations started happening, and the council ultimately decided to authorize us to move forward with the survey. So we hired Magellan, and in our last council meeting, Magellan Strategies came in, laid out that survey for us, and explained the feedback that they got from the citizens at large. And the feedback on both those areas was very strong in support of moving forward with ballot measures to address the roads through PPRTA, Pike's Peak Rural Transportation Authority, and the public safety side of things. So there was 70% support on public safety, 71% support PPRTA. And then there was the question that was asked in each of those surveys individually. One of the questions was, would you, if we put both on, would you support them both at the same time? And, you know, not surprisingly, the majority of folks said no. We had about 34 to 35% who said, yes, we would. But the majority of folks said, no, we're not comfortable with both on the on the same agenda. So the item before you is to have, excuse me, on the same ballot. The item before you is to have a discussion on what does the council desire to do, based on that feedback from the citizenry. We have, on one hand, a proposal to move forward with a public safety ballot measure that would implement a property tax mill levy that would raise approximately 1.7 million in funding for police, fire, and EMS services. It would cost, depending on the home, it would cost anywhere between four and change a month, up to $15 a month. Four and change would be for a home that's $350,000. It's like $477 a month. Up to a higher amount, depending, of course, on the valuation of the home, or lower, depending on the valuation of the home. But that would add new firefighter staff, new police officers, providing us the staffing that we would need to ultimately staff an eastside fire station, which has been the discussion for a lot of years. Excuse me, wouldn't provide the capital to build the station itself. However, through various resources that we have, to include GID number one, general improvement district number one, as well as sales tax, a public safety sales tax increment that we already have, that the city implemented a number of years ago, that would allow us some funds to, over time, build that, build phase one, at least, of an eastside fire station that would allow us to staff that. And it would provide additional funding for training, retention, and recruitment efforts. On the flip side of that, the PPRTA ballot measure would allow the city to join the PPRTA. And that is a one cent sales tax that's assessed on all retail sales in the City of Fountain, to include even home-based businesses. And so that's something, in fact, that many may not be aware of, but we, our citizens currently pay, not just when they're in other communities around, but even in the City of Fountain. Because what's been determined by the, really, the legislature is that if there is property that's already in the county, and it's already a member of the PPRTA, and annexes into a non-member city like Fountain, they are still subject to the PPRTA tax. And so if you think of South Academy Highlands, where Sam's Club is, and the Walmart up there, when you go to those, even though they're in the City of Fountain, you pay a PPRTA tax at 1%. Goes to PPRTA, and none of it comes back to the City of Fountain. If you are a home-based business, for example, if you have a food truck, and you're in a neighborhood that was annexed after the creation of PPRTA, then you're also going to be subject to a 1% tax on the goods that you sell. So those are some of the things that are happening currently. This would allow us to join and start recapturing those dollars that are already being sent out to PPRTA, as well as bringing revenues in for ongoing maintenance of our roadways. The, there's sort of, with PPRTA, it's, PPRTA is sort of a two-phase approach. Phase one would be joining the authority and getting immediately the dollars to be used for maintenance of the roadways. Phase two would be to have an election in a future year, likely the following year. That would be an election that would go out to the entire county, all the membership of the RTA, that would then allow us to plug in our capital projects into the overall RTA capital list. And then that allows us to bring in additional funds, an additional, right now, approximately $3 million for additional capital projects and construction projects that we would choose. So that's just a real quick overview of both of those. I've laid out in that, and I'm not going to go through this whole thing, but I laid out in the recommendations, pros and cons to both of those options. And I know there's a lot of pros and cons that probably are here that that folks could certainly think about. But I wanted just to kind of throw out, you know, the pluses and minuses of each one of these, without making a specific recommendation, other than the recommendation I would make, would be that with the economy we're in right now, you know, everything that's going on with gas prices, inflation, you name it, and just the fact that there are, these would be two potential drains on our residents. My recommendation would be for the council to pick one and move forward with it, as opposed to two, as much as we need resources for both of those areas. I don't think anyone, I mean, you can see from the results that everyone, not everyone, but the majority of folks in our community obviously see both of those as issues. And we can certainly see it. I just think it would be really tough, it would be a real tough ask to ask our citizenry to support financially both at this time. I would say, however, that, you know, depending on which one you move forward with first, I think that would allow time to continue to have discussions on the one that maybe didn't get sent forward, to consider that in an immediate future year. So any questions that the council may have for me at this point? I mean, really, at this point, it's for the council to have a discussion on what makes sense to you from a policy and political standpoint.
Council member Rick, is it just a question of clarification for anything he said already?
It's a question. I don't know if it's clarification or not.
Okay, can I, hang on just a minute?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any questions for anything to clarify what he said already? Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the purpose of this agenda item is to discuss the possibility of putting one, both, or neither of these survey items on the November 22nd, 22 ballot. We're going to discuss each potential ballot measure separately. First, the council, and then public input, and then we will discuss, and we're going to do the public safety first, and then the streets and roads. I ask that during the discussion portion, council refrain from stating their support or opposition until the end after the discussion is finished with both ballot measures. When discussion is closed, I will ask the council what the council wants to do, and if they want to decide to put forth a measure, and we'll vote on each measure individually and separately. So I'd like to say a few things about the public safety side first, that that survey was done first. Three themes seem to jump out at me out of the public safety and the support comments. People that said they would support the public safety were concerned about the major growth in the city and the need for more public safety in general, an increase in crime, and concern for personal safety, or of their personal or family and community safety. And some of the comments I'd like to answer that I saw in there was, a couple, a few people asked about D8, why D8 doesn't pay for the SROs. And I double-checked with Chief Huber earlier today. We have 10 SROs, and 70% of their pay comes from D8, and the city picks up the other 30% because they are full-time, year-round employees with us. The budget is on the city website. That was another concern people were saying, is that they wanted to know where the city money in general is going, and they can always just go on the website and see it. And the third thing was that we need to go out and get grants. When we do go out and get grants for public safety, those are grants that have to do with certain programs, and they cannot be used for salaries or day-to-day operations. They're very specific in what you can do with them. Some of the comments, the major themes for public safety, reasons people might not support it, was personal financial concerns, and just people in general's no tax increases. Public safety funding is in the general funds, and it will not be decreased. That was another concern people had. If we pass this, then we would decrease it in the general funds budget. That will not be decreased. And they said our police officers already have too good of cars. We lease our cars. When I first got on council, and Todd was, Todd was on staff, we had some old clunkers. We would buy the clunkers from the other departments that had 100 and some thousand miles on them, and they spent more time in the shop than they did out on the road. So we came up with a program to lease the cars, which has proved to be much better financially for us, because there's less maintenance and less downtime for them. Highway 85 is a state highway. Okay, nothing we can do about it. Okay. And Todd, I asked you to address very quickly, quiet the train, because there were some people that said, I'm never going to vote on anything, because, you know, the trains still aren't quiet in the City of Fountain. And let me tell you, they're blowing in security, and that's been a quiet zone for over 10 years. So somebody's having a good time right now. But so I wanted Todd to take a really quick moment before we get in the discussion, and maybe talk about that a little bit, where we are on that.
Sure. Yolanda, if you could go to the PDF, Moving Fountain Forward, it's a PDF map. Out of the six quiet zone areas that were approved, as everyone can see, there has been money spent on all six. Four of the six are completed. If you would just kind of come down to the south, there you go. So the four out of the six that have been completed are Duckwood, of course, that entire project is completed. And then as you come south, Comanche, the quiet zone, has been completed. As you move to the east, Ohio and the railroad tracks, that has been completed. And then as you continue down to Link, that quiet zone has been completed. So we lack two, and that being Ohio and the railroad tracks. We have completed all of the operational barriers and things that you can physically see. They have required us now to completely replace all the electronics. So that's about a $600,000 project to get Ohio. Indiana is the last, and it is budgeted with our Indiana project. As Indiana is completed, it will be completed as a quiet zone. And if we do have money left over from our quiet zone, or excuse me, our Moving Fountain Forward projects, we will put it back to Ohio, and that will be the last to complete. So we have four out of the six completed. The other two, Indiana will be coming, and then Ohio will be our last project for about $600,000.
And I'm just going to flat throw the train system under the tracks, pun intended. They have been very difficult to work with. They have lengthened, when we had the money, they have lengthened this project. And they let employees go, and then they don't hire new people, and you have to start all over again. And Brandy has been a trooper, or city engineer, working with this, and Troy at the table, too. But they have really, really slowed down this project to the point where we had to get an extension on a grant that we had gotten from CDOT to deal with the light in Indiana.
Correct.
So Troy, did you want to say something?
But we just broke through a little bit. And so a few weeks ago, we kind of broke through a little bit of a barrier with them, and seen some good movement. So that's encouraging.
And what everyone needs to realize is, quiet zones for the railroad are a burden. They don't like quiet zones. They have as many accidents as they already do in the region, and they have quite a few accidents in the region. So they're not fans of quiet zones. So they make it very difficult and put every bit of the cost on yourself. They don't like them. They feel like it makes their crossings more dangerous. So they don't make it easy, any way, shape, or form.
All right. So any barricades people see around train tracks? That is part of the Moving Fountain Forward project, and the money that you've been paying for that to keep this project going forward? All right, thank you. Okay, that said, I'd like to bring the discussion back up to the council on the public safety issue and ballot major, and make sure I have this up here correctly, so I can see who is going to push their button first. Nobody's up here so far. I know, I didn't know if his question might have been asked. Okay, okay, council member Rick?
My question is for the city clerk. If we only approve this measure, the one single, can we still add a request to de-bruce the city in time for the November election?
Yes, the timeframe wouldn't be affected at this point, no.
Thank you.
Council member Hinton? Councilmember Hinton?
That was my question.
There was your question. So you want to add a completely third ballot measure that hasn't been discussed or run by the citizens at this point?
I think it's a waste to only ask the citizens for one thing. I think if we are only going to ask for one item that we consider asking for de-brusing slash de, you know, allowing us to keep the excess funds going forward. I don't feel it would affect the tax initiative because whichever one we choose, or both, because by detaboring, we're not increasing taxes.
That's a huge ask. That's a huge education piece. That's a, a lot of people really don't understand what it means to de-bruce your city. And that isn't a conversation we have had as a council before, and I think that's a convert, my feeling is it's a conversation that we need to have for months rather than just putting something on the ballot at the last minute. And, you know, so that's just my feeling on it. I would really like to stick right at this moment, though, to discuss the public safety ballot measure and see about putting that on the ballot rather than throwing another thing into the mix at this moment. So I'd really like to hear from people what they think on the public safety. And if you don't start pushing your buttons, I'm going to start calling your names. So everybody, you know, was really gung ho on this a few months ago and really wanted to push forward on researching this, so now is your time to, to speak up. And so I will come back to you after the other council members have had a chance. So Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, so just real quick on public safety, just quick comment. I, I ran on highly for public safety. I believe public safety is important for the city as we continue to grow and to, to move Fountain Forward. So I just want to make sure that the residents of Fountain know that we're doing everything in our power to make sure that our police, our fire, our, our staff properly to respond to the occasions. As you've seen in the news lately, our police have been having some major busts, in my opinion, that have saved lives. And so, and our fire are constantly, always, every day battling different things in our, in our city. And so as we move forward, I think the time is now to push this forward and have an opportunity. I also am, would like to see our roads, but if it's, if it comes down to one or the other, I'd like to see if we could just kind of get the police, public, I mean, I don't want to do that because I know you said we're going to wait.
We're just trying to have a discussion. Do you have any?
I'm not going to make it. Thank you for squirting me away. So that's just my thoughts on that, Mayor.
So you really, yeah, you have any questions on anything that was in it or any thoughts on what you read or?
No, because it was very well briefed earlier to us, and I read all the comments and from the, from the survey dug deep into it. So it's self-forth, self-forth to me that, you know, everything that needs to be said has already been said for me.
Right. Councilmember Duncan? I just started on the right.
Well, I mean, anyone would know that I'm for our public safety and our first responders. You know, that's very important to me. It's very important to me, not only as a citizen, but to have many members in my family who are part of that team also, not here in Fountain, but, you know, they're all one, right? So when we hire more police, we decrease crime in our area. And we know that since COVID, there has been an increase. We, we've seen, and not, not just using the COVID word, but we've seen a more increase in crime in the areas, especially here in Fountain. That was one of the reasons I moved here in Fountain, right? Because I felt that Fountain was one of the safest places. You know, the, and, and, and we, just alone on my, in my area, you can't, you have to make sure that, you know, we've had to increase our cameras around our home because the break-ins outside, just, you know, just random breaking in cars. So we also, you know, that's, that's very important to me. When I read the comments, you know, and thank you, John, for pointing that out to me about the comments, because I read those and I really pondered on, you know, who would be making some of the comments. And I know that, you know, when you get a ticket right, you know, sometimes you, you're not in the best of mood, right? So you, you get a ticket, and, and people that have to enforce rules are not the most liked people. So, and, but we have to have them, and we need them. We don't just have to, we need them. I feel we're having, my child growing up, I, I don't feel that my son is in any danger walking through Fountain because I know that we have our police, you know, even with the Fourth of July, they, they were just, just recently going through the neighborhood, speaking and talking to everyone. I mean, where do you go and you get that? You don't get that anywhere else. So that's, that's my, I think that, you know, that's very important that we, we support our fire and our, and our police departments. They need us. We know that we need another fire station. We know that we need more police officers. We know that we're, we're also with their pain. You know, we have to, we have to also be competitive with pain. If we want, we want the best, we gotta, we gotta be competitive, right? So that's, that's the way I feel. I just think that when we have the presence of our police and we need more, and I think we should be forward-thinking and not get caught up. The chief has told us many times of how, if that doesn't happen, where we'll be. And I don't want to be in that position.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Corey?
I did have one question that I was wanting to ask. So right now in the budget, we have allocated funds for both roads, you know, our general fund, and then we have ones, funds for public safety, correct? If we approve one, say we go with one measure, which right now, numbers don't lie, we can't run both because they're probably both aren't going to pass, they're probably going to both end up failing. If we have funds for one and one issue passes, can we take those allocated funds and use them towards something else?
No, that, no, I stated in my statement when at the beginning, the, the budget, however much the percentage of budget that public safety has in the budget is going to stay the same. We're not going to reduce it if we pass this ballot measure. It will stay the same because there will be other needs that they're always going to be increasing. The state seems to be on a binge right now to pass, you know, extra laws. Our police department has to contend with, it's costing us extra money for things that have to, have to be done. Some are good, right? Some of them are really, really good on mental health, but some of them, you know, make it really hard for things we have to follow. So no, that, that will not be decreased in the budget. Those funds could not be allocated anywhere else.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a, yeah, it's a hard choice because like I said, we don't, we can't, probably can't run both. Because it's not going to work that way.
Yeah, just what is your general feeling on public safety, the survey, the comments that people made?
Survey went well, I think, I think the comments, I think most people were truthful. They weren't pulling our leg. They were being straightforward, whether it was good or positive or negative. And it's two issues that we got to look at. I mean, it's, you know, there's a lot. I mean, there's a lot to this. I mean, we, you know, it's like you said, for us before in the past, you said, we go another five to 10 years, you know, we might be driving on dirt. There's some roads that could get really beat up.
They are really beat up.
At the same ti, yeah, at the same time, we don't want the crime problems that like Carlspring's has coming down here. So.
Okay.
Yeah. So I don't think, I mean, I think the survey was straight up. I think it was good numbers. I think we can build on that, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, the survey was fine. Our police force is great, probably one of the best ones on the whole front range. Most everything else has been said, and I'll talk about where I stand later on when we discuss that.
Okay. Councilmember Hinton, anything else?
Negative, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Estes?
I'm going to agree with everything everybody's been saying. We do have a excellent police department, also an excellent fire department. I do have concerns with our public safety department when I'm hearing that we have to close a fire department because we don't have enough staffing, you know, because of ongoing issues, multiple issues, it's not a one single thing. That concerns me. I think this is going to be a very difficult decision because we need both things, but I agree that we probably can't do both. And so we're going to, I hope that whichever one we decide on, that we still try to figure out an answer for the other issue in the bridge until we figure, you know, can go back to the ballot or do something. But I admire our public safety for doing what they're doing with the funds we give them already. I just, I have some, it's a concern. I'm with your husband. I like the fact that if we have better police and fire department, my house insurance goes down. You know, and to me, that's kind of a benefit. It's kind of a trade-off for that mill levy. So I don't know, it's just, this is a tough one. And boy, there's some of the councils sitting up here.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to take it. Thank you, everybody, for all your comments because this is, this is passionate issues. I think we have identified the two key issues that people have talked to all of us about for, for, you know, for months and years in some cases. They've talked to us about the roads, and they've talked to us about public safety as some of their top priorities. So I'm going to go ahead and open it up, and I have two cards from people in the community. So I'm going to go ahead and open it up to Mr. Carland. Am I saying your name correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If you could come up to the microphone and state your name for the record. And it says here that you just want to talk about public safety in general, so.
It's about this issue, but yes.
Okay. There you go.
It's high-tech. RJ Carland, I live on Middle Bay Way. Good evening. Have you ever called 911 before? Most of, most people here have probably done this a few times in your life, if, if at all. Let's say you have. Did you feel like the call that you made was responded to in a reasonable amount of time? Now let me ask you this. Do you know anyone that lives over by Fountain Ford Carson High School on the other side of the tracks here? Maybe a student, grandkid, or maybe you just so happen to know a staff member there. My wife is one of them. My name is RJ Carland. I am a former firefighter. Thank you for your service. I'm also a former police officer. Thank you for your service. And an EMT. However, I am not here for any of those today. I'm here as a father, as a husband, and as a very concerned citizen who cares about my community and who also cares about the future of our first responders. We've got a great group of guys here, and we need to take care of them, or we're going to lose them. Did you know the national average response time is seven minutes? We are already exceeding this average and stretching our firefighters and police officers pretty thin. I'm pretty sure chief can attest to that. Our fire chief, I just heard this evening, is covering shift this weekend. So if we fail to focus our efforts on this now, things are only going to get worse. Now, raise your hand if you've ever called 911. I'm sure somebody in here has. Okay? Those of you that have called 911, you wanted that help there immediately, right? Of course you did, otherwise why would you have called? Now, let's say I ask you to hold your breath for 60 seconds. Could you? Maybe, maybe not. In respect for time, I'm not going to ask you to do that because the clerk is going to probably ask me to wrap this up real quick, but time for some facts. Now, chiefs, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but right now, our city response time, our average citywide response time is seven minutes and 13 seconds. That's not including if the ambulance is stuck by a railroad, which I sat behind one the other day for almost three and a half minutes. I don't know where that ambulance was going, but I was behind him, and they were with their lights on. Now, this response time is for the fire truck or for an ambulance, in this case, to get to your front door. For Station One, the response time is an average of seven minutes and 42 seconds. Year-to-date, there has been approximately 2,835 calls for service for our fire department. Do these numbers seem like a lot to you? They should, because they're up from years past. So let's take this from another point of view. Let's say your two-month-old baby, or grandbaby, in the case of some of you here, stops breathing. Maybe your husband or wife becomes breathless. Or what about your teenager? They just got struck by a car on Jimmy Camp, and they need the fire department to come help them because someone's also driving too fast out there. Are you starting to see a trend here? Time is life. Couple more facts for you. Do you realize that the brain begins to die after 10 minutes of deprivation from oxygen? Right now, our city is already experiencing record call numbers, and the response times are already rising. Remember that seven to eight minutes I told you about earlier? That's in a perfect world. Are you done holding your breath yet? That perfect world only exists when grandma stops breathing and the ambulance starts driving. Just in case you're wondering, it's not quite how it happens for those of us who've called The time without oxygen could be much longer depending on where grandma was found, how close you are to a telephone. Are you upstairs, you're downstairs, whatever. But I digress. What, we have control in keeping our response times down. That's about the only thing we have. And that time sometimes is the only control we got. Not only does the support in this matter decrease response times, but is also going to help keep our morale up and sustain a positive mental health environment for our fire department and our police department. I do recall that there's a nice, beautiful sign back here talking about how the strategic response plan of the city of Fountain is going to further and maintain. Now, please remember to consider this as you move forward this evening. So for my final point, and you touched on this, Ms. Duncan, you may not know this, but my wife and I, we used to live a half mile away from Station Six, Colorado Springs Fire. Late on an August evening in 2018, our neighborhood was suddenly awakened to smashing sheet metal. And short story long, male with multiple warrants, high on who knows what, smashed into my neighbor's car in a stolen car, and then tried to drive off. However, he was too high, didn't know which way was up. We called 911, and a mere 35 minutes later, the fire department finally showed up. And another 10 minutes after that, the police finally arrived. Oh, I don't want to forget to tell you, he also had a gun in the car that was also stolen. Pretty sure I don't have to explain on how this could go sideways. Could have gone pretty sideways quick. Bottom line is, when citizens call 911 for a true emergency, the expectation is that 911 arrives in a timely manner. I bring this all up to remind you of how important it is to think about the future of our city. I know that the other ballot measure is just as pressing, believe me, I drive in our city too. And it's equally just as much on your minds. I've talked to a couple of you outside of this forum regarding that. However, this is your chance to actually beat the curb on something. As I bring this to a close, don't forget, we're already above the national average on our response time. Our firefighters and our police officers are already on the brink of burnout. Their mental health exhaustion, compassion fatigue is already a recognized concern within our departments. If there is a failure to act now, what are these numbers going to look like in 2024 or even 2020, or 2030? Lord only knows. So don't forget, this ballot measure is going to take some time to put into place, some time to collect funds. We already have funds for building fire stations, I hear at another meeting that I was at. Time to hire these people. Ask your fire chief, ask our HR gal that spoke earlier this evening. That doesn't happen overnight. The longest time is to train these folks. Takes a long time to get a firefighter and a police officer ready to serve their citizens. So we've got to start this process now. So we've gotta start this process now, not when 5,000 or 6,000 more people move into the Fountain Valley and start tapping our already exhausted and stretched resources. I know that our city has some amazing leaders, and many of them are here right now, tonight, you folks included. They've already proven countless number of times that they are committed to the city. If you don't hear anything else from me this evening, I hope that you hear this. It is my prayer that nobody in this room or listening online must experience a tragedy because of the failure to act on behalf of city council this evening. As city council, you need to focus on how you're going to support those who support us before the issue of roads. Personally, I'd rather hit a few potholes, fix a few shocks, ask a police officer or two to help me change my tire, I'm sure my wife would do the same, than read about the suicide of an officer or firefighter, or the death of a student at our high school who needed an ambulance that didn't get there in time. Do you want to have these things on your conscience? I certainly don't. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your efforts. I hope you take careful consideration as to how to move forward this evening. And remember, now is the time to act. This is the thing that's on the docket tonight. I'm with you, Mr. Rick, as far as debruising, 100% behind you. Unfortunately, we're a long ways from that. We've got a lot of discussion for that before this, but this is what we have tonight, not next year, not in the next five years. Thank you for your time, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you. Okay, I have another card from Penny Chaminot. And I think we didn't miss getting the timer going on that last one, so if we could get it going on this one. Thank you.
It won't take long, I promise.
She's already blinking you red, so you're done.
I'm done. That's it. Bye. No, I guess maybe we saved the best for last? Was that the idea? Otherwise, the priorities might be a little off. Yeah. I'm here to say that I am in support of the police and fire department and the ballot measure going on for the citizens to vote for. I think it's obvious that things have changed in Fountain. I've been here since 1990, and I have never felt so unsafe in my own town before as I do now. And I think it's very important that we put it on the ballot, we let people vote for it, and see what comes of it. But I know, I, well, I don't know if I'm supposed to say this, but I know that I will be voting for it, because it does hit home. I don't know if it's social media. I don't know if we're just seeing more of it, but I do believe that there is more happening and very close to home, and I never felt that way before. Now, I do have a question for you, though, because you said it will cost an extra $400 a month?
No.
No, no.
Sorry. $4.
Here, in fact, Yolanda, can you pull up?
$15 a month.
I wanna show you this. I got a slide that'll show it. It's my file three that I have on there, page one of that PowerPoint presentation. Pull this up. In fact, I probably, this would've been a good thing to pull up, just to explain this real quick. So on a home value of $350,000 today, 2022 taxes, you can see your grand total taxes are. That's for the school district, that's for everything, right? Fountain portion of that, you can see what that is up there. 2023, if the public safety mill levy passes, that will increase, right? And you'll see a net increase of $52 a year, which ends up being $433 a month.
Okay.
That make sense?
Right.
If I would've pulled that up earlier, I probably would've explained it better.
Scott, can you explain why that is with that?
Yeah, so.
We didn't have that at the time we were talking about.
Because of legislation that was passed, the assessment, and the assessed value on those homes will actually decrease in 2023. So what'll happen is, even though the tax levy won't change, that home that was being assessed at $350 will now be assessed at $335. And so the person, the individuals that have that property will see a reduction in their property tax of $88 if that was a $350,000 home. Then, because of that, that also reduces, the very, very bottom that you can see over there, is because, we've been talking about this 6.2 mill levy. Because of that reduction, that, it's about a 7% reduction, by the way, of overall property taxes, that reduces the amount that that 6.2 brings in for the PD, and it actually, I say the PD, but for PD, fire, and EMS. So it actually doesn't meet the needs that they really have. And so the thought would be, well, if you wanted to meet the need, it would be to bump that mill levy to 6.65, which would be a net increase. Instead of 52 a year, it'd be 56 a year, and instead of $433 a month, it'd be $467 a month. So, you know, adding, what's that, 34 cents a month, that would actually meet their needs. But I hope that gives an overview, you know, based on that size of home.
Yeah, and I think that's a very minimal amount of money for safety. I really do. I, I, I think everybody could handle that, and I think it's very minimal. I mean, that's a Starbucks coffee once a month, right? So just give that up, and let's get our police and fire what they need. I believe in being proactive and not reactive, and we have the opportunity right now to be proactive. Not a lot of places get that. Sometimes you have to be reactive, because you didn't see it coming. But we see it coming. We see the houses coming. We see that they are gonna come, and we see that this is gonna put a strain on us. So let's be proactive. Let's go for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. Okay, those are all the cards I have. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to get up? If so, please raise your hand. Mrs. Carrick, please come up and state your name.
Hi, I'm Fran Carrick. I'm sorry I didn't fill out a card. I didn't know you had to. Our most important resources are our children, and it's hard to fathom what some of the crazies are doing in the schools. I have seen our police department interact with the kids at the high school, and it is such a positive reaction that these kids have. I think it's so important that we keep those SROs in those schools. We are a model for the state. I think Chief Herbert has done an excellent job with that. And then I believe, too, that, that crime is, is just exponentially risen. And, and like Penny said, we now have an opportunity to be proactive with this, and I am, I am all for this being on the ballot, and I will support it 100%. I also think that the voters in Fountain are savvy. I think they're smart, and I think they're interested, the voters, those 3,000 or 4,000 that show up. So I like Councilman Rick's idea about debruising. I'd like to see that money. Floyd and I talked about it today, how if that money could be brought in and then put towards roads. I think that would be a good idea, and I think people would vote for that. I, I do. It's a good feeling. We have to do something to, first, protect our children, and then, as the young girl brought up tonight, we are going, this city has to do something to provide entertainment or someplace for them to go when they're out of school. Yes, for our children. That's part of our responsibility.
Thank you very much. I see Rick getting up back there, coming down front.
Rick Clements, I think that, I've got very emotional things about the RTA, so I'm, I'm totally against that, totally, is that I've been, where that they promised us stuff, and it never came. So I don't trust them, not any part of it, because it, it just, they'll promise you one thing, and then they use the money for something totally different, and it doesn't go.
That's their project list, and as of right now, even if we join it, we would not have any projects on the project list. We would only be getting back the tax dollars that were already paying into it, because we are paying through.
Right.
Possibly up to a third of our businesses in town that are not only up on Vinicius, but spotted around at other places, are paying taxes into that. And that money just goes up to, to the RTA now to do whatever they want with it, and we don't get any of it back.
Right. And then, and then the following year, when they say you're gonna get it, it's not gonna be there either.
Well, the tax dollars will be, I understand what you're talking about, the project list. I've been to their meetings, I've watched what they do, and, and, and I understand your concerns with the project list.
I, I am.
But, but what about public safety we're talking about now, though?
Public safety is that we need it 100%.
Okay.
That's what needs to be on the ballot.
All right. Thank you. Or is there any other comments from anybody about the public safety ballot measure? Does anybody in council want to say anything else about the public safety ballot measure?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'll just summarize briefly. I'd be remiss if I didn't speak at, you know, what I believe, and some people here believe is an important time. I'll be very reeve, because we've been wargaming this and talking about it for months, and you know, number one, as a citizen who lives here, both of them are very important. One has been allocated tonight, has lives at stake to it. It's got 31,000 lives at stake counting on us every day, every night, 24/7 through COVID, to be out there and be available. We're already starting to break in our fire department. There's scenes that are coming up, there's mandatory overtime that's taking our tolls. We've had to close down fire stations the last several weeks. That takes a cost, especially to our business district of our response time, has been allocated response time to loved ones. Calls for service are gonna continue to rise. That is the one guaranteed fact, that we're standing on the precipice of a hill, and we have something to do about it. We'll either go down the hill and come out of it, and we'll have a plan for the future and lock it in, or we're gonna start sliding back that, down that hill. That's gonna be in years. But in five years from now, our response time will resemble Colorado Springs, which in 2019, for a police 911 emergency, was 11 minutes and 46 seconds. Doesn't even count what fire's doing. The recruiting retention nightmare that's been across the country, specifically to a lot of bad legislation here in Colorado, we've been very blessed to not have it, but it will come here. It will impact our ability to retain and hire the best. And we've always been, as Chief Joyce and I and Frank talk about, we've been committed to quality, and you see the quality and the service we provide our citizens and their satisfaction, police and fire, which are both very high. On the police side of it, the calls for service, and two years ago, were 38,000, followed by 47,000. We're on track this year for 54,000. RJ is exactly right. The one thing that we'll, we'll sacrifice is the level of service and our response time to our citizens, and we just have to carefully consider that. I can only advocate for the team. I understand all the needs for the city. Whatever the decision is tonight, all of us that are here will come in tomorrow and work very hard to do our job to the best of our ability, protect our citizens. But this vote is important, and we are ahead of the curve right now, and this decision will be important for you to consider tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from any of your staff members? Chief Joyce?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, and everyone here tonight. I'd like to reiterate where Chris was going with that. I do appreciate that, and I don't want to come and paint a picture of gloom and doom, but obviously, you're hearing a lot of data, and data tells a story. Tells a story of whom we're, you heard, the gentleman come up here and speak tonight. He talked about the calls for service that were going on. We're talking about our staffing. Councilmember, you asked me about the staffing. Currently, our staffing right now, what is our staffing for the fire department? I'll speak specifically to that. Currently, we're staffed at 10 per shift. We have an A, B, and C shift. We have part timers that augment in there, but they fill in those things. We came up with a good plan. It didn't quite work out, and that was with our per diems. They aren't quite filling in there, because we can't hold them accountable in there. But where are we going with this? With that staffing, 10 people per shift, that's our minimum staffing, because basically, we're asking our firefighters, they're gonna work 365 days a year. They don't get time off, but they do have leave. You heard from Connie talking about, you know, the leave and stuff like that, you know, going there. I have several firefighters who've had to give back, use and lose leave over their career here in the City of Fountain, because they're being denied leave. But let's really talk about the picture. I can go in that quantitative. Councilmember, I talked to you, you know, one day with your wife, and we have 4,844 calls a year. That's just a number, but it's a fact. It's a fact. 4,844 calls, that's 15% of the 32,000 citizens we have. 15% of them are getting calls for service. Well, that's just still a number, but it's a fact. And what does that mean? That means that our calls for service, we're running 13 calls a shift. That's just a number. But again, it's a fact. That means every hour and 45 minutes, an engine or an ambulance is running a call. But what does that mean? Well, let me give you a story on this. An ambulance call from start to finish from my house to your house, to the hospital, back to my house, it's an hour and a half. An engine response for a structure fire, average structure fire is two hours. We're running an hour and 45 minutes. Right now, we're managing, we're making it, because we're using our regional aid partners. But as we grow with this community, if we don't grow with the community, and we go to 52,000, 58,000, we're talking 8,000 calls, now, we're running 22 to 24 calls a shift. They're not sleeping, they're not taking a break, they're responding. Those calls, I just told you, they're still an hour and a half, but we're running every hour. I'm going to your house, Madam Mayor, but I'm not going to your house. Someone's not gonna survive. A house isn't gonna be there. But again, this is data, this is risk. We can talk about risk all day, all night. That risk, life safety risk, and physical risk. But what is it that we're trying to build here? We're trying to build a resilient response model. To do what? We, as a city, have to decide, what do we value? What do we value? Let's just take an example of Walmart here on Santa Fe. That brings a big value to the city, I believe it does. I believe we have a significant amount of citizens there. I might give you a story of Presidio Monorank, when we lost to McDonald's. Not very many employees, not a big significant impact to a city for revenue that's coming in, but however, they didn't rebuild that for three years, and those employees didn't have a job. Could you imagine if we don't have an adequate response force to stop a fire at Walmart? And now, we're three years out. How many of our citizens don't have a job? What revenue is coming in now? So we're talking about a value. So again, I am going in here, I wanted to bring that up, not to give a gloom and doom, but so that you understand that. But we gotta place a value on your public safety department. What are we gonna do with that? You know, and it is concerns with that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I wanted to check with IT to see if we had any comments, people had typed in, or anybody waiting to say anything?
Uh, no, we do not.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there anybody in the audience? Last chance. Some of you have been waited a long time. If not, we're gonna go ahead and move on to discussing the roads and streets. I'm sorry? Okay, I thought you said something. Okay, all right, so council's been listening, and I think we've heard loud and clear from many of the citizens are concerned not only with public safety, but also with the condition of our roads and curbs and gutters. The number one comment overwhelmingly from all the comments that were, were put in from the survey was deteriorating conditions of the roads. I would like to stress something, though, for some of the people who commented on the roundabout at Fortman and Fountain Mesa, once again, that is a county project, and that was ironically paid with RTA monies that were voted on by the citizens that were in the RTA to have that added onto the project list. So, I'm not pushing RTA, I'm just saying that that's how that project, a lot of people asked how that project got on there, and it was, it was put on the last time they had their RTA ballot measures, and, and I think Commissioner Lahino's actually pushed that as one of the projects down here in the area to do something about that intersection. And some of the comments were also regarding the transit system. If we were to join RTA, we would still retain our own transit system. We would not join Mountain Metro. That was a huge thing for me, and before I would even consider that, that was an answer that had to be added. I think we've all suffered through Mountain Metro down here. They say you don't need good service, because you have low ridership, but you have low ridership because you have poor service, and their answer to poor, low ridership is to cut the service even more, so you get even less people that depend on it and ride it. So we will be keeping our own transit system if this, we were to join this, and that is paid for, still continues to be paid for through our moving Fountain Forward dollars. Correct, Todd?
Right.
That is, okay. All righty. So with those things said, Scott, did you have anything to say about the streets and roads before we?
I don't think there's anything really to add, other than what's in your agenda packets. I don't have anything to add. You know, actually, I do have one thing to add, and it's just, just a comment, and it's sort of when you're making this decision, one of the challenges that we will have, no matter which way you go, is just making sure that we have the capacity to get out there and get the message out to our community. I know. I know, for example, with public safety, we have a lot of volunteers that we have lined up, quite a big group that's able to do that. I think with, if the council decides to move forward with a PPRTA direction, that'll be, that'll be a conversation we'll really have to have because we don't have that pre-made group of volunteers set up, so we'd have to identify. We have a very, very committed roadway focus group, but a lot of those folks have been working on this for several years and just would, would probably really struggle to carry the entire, you know, the weight of that measure, so I think we're gonna have to identify, and this is based on some conversation with Todd, we're gonna have to identify a whole new group of volunteers to get out there and try to get that message out. So there is, I just wanna make sure that that's clear, that we would have to pull that together and figure out how to do that as well.
Okay, so that would be the 1% sales tax to match what is already being collected up in some of the areas, various areas of town, it would just be in the rest of the town into it. So is there anybody in council who'd like to kick off if they have any questions or discussions or comments about it? Councilmember Duncan?
So, I'm, PPRTA, as we've said, is, we've, our businesses, one-third of our businesses is providing money to PPRTA. And PPRTA is having a meeting, three topics that are on their policy issue for tomorrow. So I wish we were having this meeting after tomorrow, but it's at 1:30. And one of the things that they're discussing is public safety, wildfire evacuation, and special districts and taxations. So I would like, you know, for, if you have the time at 1:30 tomorrow to please, you can go in person and it's 15th South 7th Street in Colorado Springs, or you can go on pprta.com and look at it online, if you don't know that much about PPRTA. It means at Pike's Peak Transit Authority, and they, these are three very important issues that are being discussed tomorrow. Even though Fountain does not have any, any of the, any of the issues on, the road issues on the ballot for them to discuss tomorrow, we could if we were a part of it. This is, this is not a public safety for me versus PPRTA. It's, you know, we've heard over and over about our roads and we've heard over and, I don't know, my, I'm looking for feedback to say if we don't do PPRTA, then what? Right? I think we should have a solution to the problem. I don't think that we should just say no to PPRTA and then live on the street where I live where it's already almost unbearable to even ride down the street. And I don't know what it would be in another five years. I don't know what it'd be, I don't know what it would be if we got a really bad, if we got a lot of rain, I just don't know where it would be. So, those are my thoughts with that. I mean, PPRTA does discuss and have policies on public safety, and so I would be, you know, remiss with not saying that tomorrow at 1:30 for you to go online and to listen at what is going to be discussed tomorrow. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. And just, I wanna make it clear, while the current entities that are in Pike's Peak Rural Transit Authority, PPRTA, are voting on it this year to continue it, we do have the option that if we decided to only put one ballot measure on this year, we could still join it next year, we have made it clear with them. In the past, it used to be you had to join the year it was being renewed, but they changed that recently, that if, that you could really join at any time. However, you do lose the monies you would have had if you voted on it this year, so I just wanna make sure people in the audience understand that if we don't put that one on this year, we can put it, we can put it on again next year. So, and I don't see any other lights? You all want me to just start calling on you again, or anybody wanna volunteer?
I had it on, you just answered my question.
Oh, I just answered your question, okay. Oh, okay, all right. Gosh, all those premonitions coming toward me, that was good, keep 'em coming. All right, any further questions or discussion from beyond council? Councilmember Corey, councilmember Rick, councilmember Applegate?
Are we ready to discuss?
Yeah, not, no, not what we wanna do yet, because I wanna send it out to the audience, the first that have been really patient, is there anyone from the audience that would like to say anything about RTA? And the streets, streets and roads ballot measure?
I just have a question.
Sure.
How much?
Can you turn the mic on, please? There, it's on, oh no, that's the light on, okay.
Doesn't take much to lose a train of thought. So how much would we get from PPRTA every year? What, what kind of money would be rolling in?
So we estimate right now, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong on this, we estimate right now we're losing $1.2 million per year just from the Vinatucci Walmart area.
This year we would receive 2 million for road maintenance.
And that can only be used for road maintenance, is that correct Todd?
Exactly.
Okay, and so it can't be used for, we can't make up a big project or something because we're not on the project list of RTA, this will only be for road maintenance, it's identified for that and that's all it can be used for, it can't be used for anything else.
And how much do we lose on our, do we lose money on our bus system? Are we losing money?
Oh yeah, yeah.
That's what I thought.
We're not anywhere close to being, most transit systems aren't, especially the smaller rural like we are, it's not a money-making entity.
Mountain Metro doesn't make any money either.
No.
So, PPRTA is funded by taxes from businesses?
From the one cent per sales tax, it's a sales tax that everybody pays, not just the businesses, the businesses just collect it and then they remit it, just like we always do, to the authority that collects that tax, and I don't know if that's to the state or directly to RTA, I'm not sure how that works at that point, but, but, so it's, it's a one cent tax you're paying, already paying, every time you're shopping up at Sam's Club, Walmart, or any of the businesses up in that area. And then there's a few other spot ones around town that, that also have to collect it because they were, they were in the county before they were annexed into the city.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to figure out, how that worked, that they pay into it, but does Nolas pay?
So, so if they were in the county when the RTA was created and they set the boundaries for the RTA area, okay? Those boundaries don't change unless somebody like us wants to opt into it, right? That was county land up at, are you talking about Vinatucci Walmart? That was county land, and I don't know if you remember, we, they, they came, they tried to go into Colorado Springs and they rejected them and three times Fountain sent them back to Colorado Springs, and after the third time, they came back to us and we said, okay, you know, you'll be part of our city, and we annexed them.
Yeah.
As part of that though, since they were already in the RTA, there was actually a state ruling that they had to stay in the RTA because they were already there and they couldn't go out.
Well, the reason I, the reason I would be opposed to this is, is for what Rick brought up earlier. I've, I've read some articles that are concerning to me about PPRTA and some of the, the funding and the...
And I was saying, that's the project list, they have a project list that's A, B, and C. And those project lists are voted on by the citizens within the community and they have to be done, you know, in a certain order. However, it does get a little frustrating when they take a project that, that is on the B or the C list, and then they bump it up to the A list because potentially the projects on the A list still need a lot more money, but they might have enough money right now to do a project on the B or C list. And so, that's where it's really, I've asked, I had asked Commissioner Lahino's years ago when Vinatucci Walmart came in there to stay as our representative because otherwise Fountain had no representative on RTA, and he has very graciously stayed on that board all these years to help fight for us, you know, in different projects, you know, in this end of the valley. But, but as far as the tax dollars that can be used for the transportation, we, they just are using them on whatever they want, right Todd? And go ahead if you have anything else to say.
I'm sorry?
I was gonna see if Todd had anything to add to that answer.
You know, one of the things, and again, we don't own any stock and we would never sit back and defend prior things that have been done with PPRTA, but one of the things they have changed to address some of those concerns is they do it now with a population formula so that we know how much money specifically every year would come to us. They changed that in PPRTA 2 about 10 years ago, because some of the smaller entities had big problems with exactly what you and Rick brought up. So they made adjustments, so the estimates that we would be receiving back, we would create our own 10-year project list that the mayor was speaking of, so our money would go specifically to our list to the tune of $3 million a year estimate based off our population, would go to that capital project list, and another 2 million a year would come back for maintenance.
And then if we had a project, would it go to PPRTA and they would put it on their project list?
We would have to do a whole nother ballot issue.
With our own list.
With our own, add, add on to the list, we'd have to, that would be down the road. But right now, even if we didn't put a project on the list, we can start getting those tax dollars back for...
The maintenance.
For the maintenance portion of it.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and it is frustrating, and, and you know, one of the reasons in years past I never even considered RTA was, one year it was as bad as we would have gotten 40 cents in the dollar back. That's silly to send your money out somewhere to get 40, to send a dollar out to get 40 cents back, right? But now that they've changed the way they've done it and we will have the chance to get these tax dollars back, that's why, you know, it was, we were listening to the people and we had a work session with council and we threw out different things that we thought were priorities to citizens and ideas on how to ask them to invest in their community and this was one of the ideas that came up for the, the roads and transportation part as well as the, the public safety mill levy, so.
Well, I still support public safety first, just so you know.
Right. I get it. But they drive on our roads too, and let me tell you, what there happens to their cars when they're going fast and they don't see a pothole in the dark and it's full of snow, we don't probably wanna know, do we? Thank you, that's, those are good questions. Are there any questions or comments from anybody else in the audience regarding the streets and roadways? Oh, sir, you started to come up?
I don't you remember?
I didn't know if maybe you would add the same question as hers, that's maybe why you went and sat down.
I'll be, I'll be a whole lot more brief this time, so.
Thank you.
RJ Carlin, Middle Bay Way. I, you guys got a tough, tough, you know, it's a nasty sandwich either way you slice it, so. I appreciate the desire to wanna see what's on, you know, on this meeting tomorrow, but I really don't think that needs to weigh into any of your decisions that you make here tonight, that's tomorrow. Tomorrow's got enough problems of its own, let today worry about itself. So, PPRTA, we've got the experience there that, you know, leaves this kinda feeling not, not so great at the end of the day, a little empty-handed. So, maybe it's time to just pick that up next year. I think it's clear where I stand on the issue, scroll back about 25 minutes, you'll remember that, but drop 'em.
Thank you very much. Staff, any last comments? Okay, we're gonna bring it back to the dais and now it is decision time. So we have a decision to make. We have two issues in front of them, this is discussion and decision on ballot measures for the item November 2022 ballot measure. When we had our work session, we laid out several different items and we decided really to go forward with these two this year and that detaboring and possibly lodger's tax at some point could wait, and that's what we had decided as a group. So I'd like to go ahead and I would like to see what council would like to do to entertain a motion for one of the two measures that we have here on public safety or the PPRTA. And councilmember Hinton?
Before that, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to say, either way this goes, we have to get the residents involved. Historically, Fountain has a low voter turnout, we have to get behind whatever decision is happens tonight. That's as a council, that's as a, as a, as a city of Fountain to make whatever one comes forward successful. So I just implore all of our citizens, our council, to do our very best to get the word out, to educate folks, and then let them vote their conscience.
Okay, I thought you were gonna make a motion after you said that. Okay, okay, you said first before I do this, I wanna say something, so I was kinda waiting. Okay, don't wanna be accused of interrupting if you're gonna make a motion. Okay, councilmember Estes?
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion. I move that we move forward with the public safety initiative for this year and I would request that we request the 6.65 mill levy increase and with the caveat that we still pursue the PPRTA next year.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by councilmember Estes to put the public safety measure on the ballot with 6.65.
Don't even let anyone else talk.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Applegate, did you have a comment you wanted to say before we made the motion?
Yes.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor, let's go ahead and get the second and then I will come back for your discussion of it, is that okay? Because we, we, once we have a motion on the floor, we need to get the second for it, so then we'll do, then we'll discuss, okay. All righty, council, councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second for public safety at 6.65, however, we do have discussion on the items. So Mr. Applegate?
Well, I just wanted to point out, I'm thinking purely political here and trying to get this thing passed, and between the two, they both had an approval rating almost within a margin of error, 56 and 58. The absolutely opposed was for some reason, for the security was 34% and it was only 28% for the road, which, I don't understand that unless they thought the mill levy was bigger, but they were opposed and there was a lot of that, and I was just thinking, maybe we consider what we want to get passed, and that's all. I'll support either one adamantly because I think they're both great, it's too bad we can't run both, but, but I'm seeing one that's maybe a little more favorable, but that's just me.
Well, and, and, yeah, we can, you can make a motion on the other one if you want to when we finish with this, so you're always welcome to do that. We're gonna, this one's for public safety, and then after we vote on the public safety, you put it on the ballot, if you would like to make a motion to put another ballot measure on, you can do that.
Can you do that? Once one's already passed?
Yeah, because we decided we didn't.
Yeah, I think, I think councilmember Estes was at, to make your, your motion clear, was that a motion just for public safety through this year, right?
Yes, and this, and then she just made a comment of, I'd like to see what's put RTA.
She's raising the mill levy.
So then, so then if, if, because the motion's on the table, if the motion passes, that'll be the direction for staff to put that on the ballot, you could follow up with another motion to put the RTA on the ballot as well in addition to that, and then if the motion fails, obviously you could make a motion for the RTA after, to be the only one. Does that make sense?
So would you like her to restate, would you like her to restate the motion without the comment to put RTA on next year? Would you feel more comfortable with that? Just, just restate? I know, we can, we haven't voted on it, we can, we can, it can, you can agree or not agree to the amendment or not.
But it has been motioned for the second.
I, I took what she said about RTA as just a comment, I didn't take that as part of her motion. So would you please restate the motion that you made?
My motion is to proceed with the public safety initiative by increasing the mill levy 6.65 for this year's ballot.
Councilmember Duncan, is that what you seconded?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have some clarification on that. Okay, all righty, we, and so is there any further discussion? Councilmember Corey?
But I had one, quick thing to add. So, when we go to the next issue then, so say we wanna look at the infrastructure thing for joining PPRTA, could we make another motion then to maybe table that or to revisit that in the, in a latter year? Could we do that? So say not address it right now, so we're not going, so we could make a motion maybe to not put it on the ballot this year?
Okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rule your question, it's out of order right now because it doesn't have anything to do with the motion on the floor, so we need to just deal with the motion on the floor and then we can discuss the next item, okay? All righty, so is there any other discussion on the, for the motion on the floor? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion on the floor to put the public safety measure on the ballot at 6.65%?
For mills.
For mills, thank you, for a mill levy, 6.65%. All right. Seeing no further discussion, please vote. Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried. I apologize. I apologize. Six yes, one no. Motion carried.
The reason I voted no was because she changed the mill levy. I don't think she should have done that when people were notified of one thing.
Okay, the fact that it was 6.25 in the survey and then the motion was for 6.65. Okay, I understand.
Shouldn't change it once we tell.
Well, the reason it changed was because the basing on the the new information that we received just yesterday, really, from the county assessor about how the mill levy that the assessor's values decrease is going to decrease the tax. So to get the amount of money that we needed in the original measure, we had to change the money. But thank you for explaining that. I appreciate it. It still means you're gonna support it.
Of course.
Absolutely. I'll give you your list and you can go pound the street. Okay, all righty.
It's procedural, thank you.
I understand. Okay, is there anything? Okay, so we have that measure on the ballot. We also had something to do with the roadways, so the streets and the roads. And that was for to join RTA and that would be the 1% sales tax increase for the rest of the town. Anyone who would what would council like to do with that? Councilmember Cory?
I'm not sure if this is out of order, if this is the right way to do it.
That's okay.
But I move that the city council staff appropriate, what is it, the Pike's Peak Rural Transportation Authority, that we look at an appropriate ballot measure for the year 2023. Since we can because we went over the legalities of it, we can join.
We're not admitting to it.
Yes.
The city attorney has.
We're going to direct it. Right, because we don't have to join right this second. We can look at it in a latter year.
And I suppose I would just ask for clarification, what what you want, what do you mean by look into, just to first staff clarification?
2023, next year.
I just want clear direction.
He doesn't like the words look into. That's not good legal words.
Put it on the ballot for 2023. How about that? Let's concretize it.
Well, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Cory. I I think what you're trying to say is that if if about the public safety, which already got approved, that the PPRTA doesn't die tonight, that we still consider it for 2023.
Right.
Do we have to have that? Can we? I don't know. We have.
Oh, is that what I need to do? Do I need to say agenda?
You you made a motion that would, if we passed it, we would absolutely have to put it on the ballot next year. We would have no option if something catastrophic happened or something, we would have to put it on the ballot or we'd have to come back and take it off, have to redo that. So if you would like to make a discussion that we don't we keep this on the front burner so that next year we are gonna, you know, try to make a commitment to try to keep it on the ballot, that would be one thing. But to make a motion for it is really, you have to really tie our hands. So you would almost have to say, I make a motion that we will put the RTA issue on the 2023 ballot, period. Not think about it, not investigate it, just and then see if you can get somebody to second it.
But how do we want to word it then so it stays in the stays on the front burner but not as in concrete then? If that's what.
Well, it is. It's it's on our strategic plan.
To consider.
Our strategic plan, if John could, our strategic plan has to do with roads, right? Transportation.
One of the priorities is focused on, you know, facilitating responsible development and roads would be part of that. There are several strategic objectives that are focused on roads as well. So it's certainly part of the overall strategic plan.
And so, Councilman, if if that's kind of where where you're wanting to head, I would suggest just when the time is right in 2023, bring it back up like we're doing now.
Okay.
As a as a councilman, that you can certainly do that. But again, I want I would just want to be clear with staff direction, like like the mayor said, if if you make a motion to do something, we're gonna make sure it gets done.
Right.
And so I think if I think what I hear you saying is you just want to have the conversation in 2023.
Consider it. So consider it.
Yes. Keep it on the front burner. We know it's a priority. It's a priority to our citizens. It's a priority to all of us.
No motion then would be the best way to do it?
You need would need to rescind your motion.
Okay, then I'll rescind my motion with that being said, so.
Okay.
But.
You're just making a comment.
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Gordon. Rick?
I move to add the Pike's Peak Regional Transportation Authority 1% sales tax to the 2022 November ballot.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Okay, there is no second, so the motion fails for lack of a second.
I'll second it. Let's see what happens.
Okay, I think we need to since I already declared that the motion failed, we're gonna is there any other action that the council would like to do tonight? And you can restate the motion if you want, but we just need a second, a little bit faster. So.
Move to add the PPRTA 1% sales tax to the November 22 ballot.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? One, 1,000. Two, 1,000. Three, 1,000. Four, 1,000. Okay, motion fails for lack of a second. Okay. All right. Are there any other major any other ballot issues anybody would like to discuss tonight?
Madam Mayor?
Seeing none. Mr. Trainer?
You know, I'm just going back to Councilmember Cory's comment. If there is a sense that the council wants the staff to continue to move forward along the PPRTA path, I think it we would want some direction far sooner than 2023 because the reality is if we do need to head down that path, we're gonna want to start pulling together volunteers, talking about what that strategy looks like, figuring out how do we get the message out to the community. It's a complex issue. And so it doesn't have to be anything specific to the ballot, putting on the ballot, but just even a consensus of, do you want us to continue to, you know, to to put information together to to move forward as if it's going to be on a future ballot? Does that make sense? Just giving us some sort of direction or not.
Well, and one one item that's important, I'll be going to the PPRTA board meeting tomorrow and it would be nice to have that kind of specific information to update them. Scott went last week to their CAC meeting and I'm going tomorrow. So it would be good if we had that specific direction so that we could relay that to them on what our plans are.
Yeah, and I just want to make it clear, we would only next year be joining RTA. Again, just like the motion, you know, the potential motion was tonight, we would only be joining and to get the the tax dollars back, the sales tax dollars back for the for the project, not on the project list. Oh, my gosh. It's taking for a break.
I'm not joining, Sharon, we just make a motion for staff.
Okay, but I want to make sure everybody understands that because we were saying earlier that we would have to go next year back to the ballot for the projects list. We'd have to be on it first and then go back another year for any potential project list. Okay, so Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, I make a motion to authorize staff to continue working towards joining PPRTA as diligently as they can.
Does that need to be a motion or are you just looking for consensus from the from the council?
I mean, honestly, either one. You know, at some point next year.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, we have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Cory?
Second.
Okay, so the motion on the floor, Richard, could you restate it just to make sure?
Sure.
I make a motion to authorize staff to continue diligently to work towards joining PPRTA in the future.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Please vote. Not ready? Hang on. Okay, there we go.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay. Is there any further business for any ballot issues that anybody wants to bring up tonight? You want to make a motion to put something else on the ballot?
I just something that got my attention tonight that I hadn't considered by Councilman Rick about the Tabor deal. What kind of money would we be looking at annually if we opted out of Tabor?
That's a huge discussion. I don't even know if Scott can summarize it in just a couple of minutes. And the education piece that really, really needs to get across to people with Tabor is detaboring your city doesn't mean that you don't get to vote on any tax increases. And a lot of people that don't understand Tabor think that if you detabor, it takes away their right to vote on any ballot, I mean, any tax increases, and that's absolutely not true. But Scott, go ahead and take a stab at it.
I'm gonna really do a super quick Reader's Digest version. We're allowed under Tabor to take this much revenue. If you're underneath that cap, you don't have to refund anything. Once you hit that cap and you start bumping over, then you refund it. So in some years, it wouldn't give us anything. If it was a year that our revenues were coming in higher than were allowed, then there would be a refund portion that detaboring would allow us to keep. So every year would be different to me.
Have we ever gone over that?
We did. Oh, I don't remember how many years ago it was, but we actually took a refund to the voters to, if you recall, we asked the voters to allow the city to retain the funds and we built that building in Metcalf Park with the concession stand and the offices right there. How many years ago was that? Maybe 10?
A long time ago.
Something like that.
Way more than that.
But since then, no. However, it is an issue that comes up. I mean, we especially as things come out of COVID and and the revenues start coming up, then that's a possibility. It's a real possibility within the in fact, we projected happening within the next year to two years.
So it's probably not reality to expect to we could get money to transfer back to the road street department from that.
No, it's yeah, unfortunately, it's not the way it works. The biggest drawback to Tabor is if you do get up to what he was saying, that level of you're getting over the tax dollars, then it resets. Go ahead and take a stab at it in a minute. One of somebody.
So when we have a downturn in the economy, right, that that allowed limit drops. And so what the really interesting thing is, even when you start climbing back up, that dropped limit ratchets you back to this level. And so you you even if you were the most perfectly efficient organization in the world, you're never going to be able to bump past, you know, what that ratchet back effect does. So it really just kind of it limits you. And so so that detaboring would obviously help with that. But no, there's not like a there wouldn't be a landslide of money that would come in initially. Now, in a year where you're seeing revenues pop back up, then there would be that increment you could keep.
Yeah, that's why we had talked about we weren't there yet. So we felt like that was an issue that we could put off for a year or two and then potentially do a lot of education to people, make sure they really understand what it means rather than just arbitrarily kind of throw it on the ballot and then people think, oh, that means I don't get to ever vote on any tax increases again, and that's not what it means at all. That that part would never go away. And to me, that's too important. It's your money. You need to vote on what's important to you, just like we did tonight, prioritizing a ballot measure on public safety.
Thank you.
I hope we can look forward to everybody in this room tonight reaching out to any of us and getting involved. And we need to hit the streets and educate and different things. So thank you very much for your time. So goodness, let's get back to the actual agenda here, huh? All righty. So we're on to item 10, Correspondence, Comics and S. official reports. Hopefully, it can go fairly quick. Scott? Troy?
Nothing.
Chief?
Thank you.
John? Dan? Todd? IT? Chief? 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 Whoever we got out there. All right. All right, that was nice and quick. Thank you, everybody. Joni? She's afraid now. She's not gonna say nothing. All right, count already council members, we'll start on my left here. Councilmember Rick?
Let me tell you all the story. Long, no, just nothing, man.
Okay, I thought you might get strangled there for a second. Okay, Councilmember Cory?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Hinton?
It's been a long night. I just want to say I went to an event. I cannot remember it. Chief, where was that event that we were at that you and I talked?
That's a beer event.
Yes, it was a great event.
We drinks.
Yes, a lot of people turned out. I appreciate everybody coming out for that. And so that's all I got.
All right, fantastic. Tim, Councilmember Estes.
Same thing. I went to Thunder in the Valley over the weekend. Mayor picked out an awesome winner and it largest ever, 248 entries. So wonderful on that. And just a word on Artith Bruce, she was put into the Pro-Rodeo Hall of Fame Hall of Fame today also. Sadly, she didn't make it to that, but she was an institution in this city.
I saw photos online of the display of the her memento. It was beautiful. Yeah, really nice. Councilmember Applegate?
I got nothing.
Councilmember Duncan?
I have a few things. I would like to send up prayers for the family of the six-year-old Simon who was bit by rattlesnake insecurity. I would just need to be conscientious of our surroundings when we have our children outside. And my heart goes out to the family. I just want to put that out there in the atmosphere that I am praying for that family. I know they're really heartbroken right now. I would hate to be in their shoes. The Legal Women Voters is hosting a Gen 2 video contest. As we noticed, you know, we've been saying about the low turnout rate to our voters. The contest goes live on July 15. And what this is trying to do is increase our younger population and getting interested in voting. And we have our Fountain Youth Council, we meet during the we don't meet during the summer months. We meet the same as when the kids are in and out of school. And, you know, we have a lot of inspiring kids and it was great to see that we had two of our youth council here, but we don't meet during the during the summer months. So just my son said to me on our way here that, Mom, we have a lot of homeless people moving to Fountain. So our children on our youth council, they're inspiring kids, they're smart kids, they[1680.16]